This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening and welcome to our February 7th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome Sally, welcome Bill, thank you for being here, and welcome to our live viewing audience and to those that are here this evening. Item number one, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, public comments to the agenda.
Yeah, I have one, it's the next item. Item number three, we have to correct a typo for the date for the minute for our Board of Selectmen meeting. It was January 3rd, not January 2nd. So if we could just make that correction.
Yes. Okay. Bill, any comments on that? All right. All right, so we make the correction Valerie. Item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from January 3rd.
Yes, I'll move the approval of those minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting of January 3rd, 2019.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, the approval of the minutes of the special Board of Selectmen meeting from February 1st. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So I put together ladies and gentlemen, a little bit of an overview that I wanted to present to those who are here this evening and to those watching on North Haven TV. And let's talk a little bit about some operational issues. So there has been some questions about people taking pictures of houses and I wanted to let everyone know that every five years, by Connecticut State statute, every municipality in the state of Connecticut must do what's called a revaluation. And this is a residential property inspection process. This has been going on for decades and decades all across the state of Connecticut. So what we have on the residential inspections, they are underway. The revale will take place next year in terms of impact. There's an outside vendor called E-Quality Valuation Services. They won the bid, we go out to bid every five years for this appraisal process, and they are in the process of going all over North Haven and taking pictures of houses from the street. They will ring the doorbell and ask if... identify themselves, they all have badges. They all are certified by the town and the police department. And if no one is home or answers the doorbell, they may walk around the property to just do a little bit of a surveillance. So these pictures that are taken, you would see these pictures if you went on the assessor's database. There's pictures of just about every home. They call them field cards with the acreage of the property, the square footage of the property, the year the home was built, and other information about the home with a valuation of each home in North Haven. Again, this is no different than what's been going on here for decades. Every five years it happens, and many, if not most municipalities are going through this either this year or next year. From a storm debris standpoint, we've gotten some calls in town hall, and the town is not currently picking up the debris. And I wanted to share with you some of the reasons why. We're still waiting for reimbursement from a massive cleanup which cost the town $400,000 back in May. We don't anticipate getting reimbursed from FEMA till probably late this year if we do get reimbursed. Secondly, I'm gonna jump to point number three here before we get back to number two. We have a shortage of manpower right now. We've had a couple of individuals get hurt during the ice storm, and in certain parts of town recycling has been delayed, particularly in the western part of town. So what some of the residents may see is that trash is getting picked up first and recyclables are there much later than they would normally be because the process is that the recycle trucks come and pick up around 6 o'clock in the morning. So what's happening is because of the shortage of manpower that our municipal waste collection people are picking the trash up first, we're short-staffed on the recyclable side. And when the public works, people who pick up the municipal waste, when they go back and deposit the waste, the trucks go back and forth to South Cherry Street in Wallingford, those individuals are coming back and picking up the recyclables. So we're short manpower. Back to point number two, there's no funding in the budget to clean up after every winter storm. We've been doing it in tornadoes and we've been doing it in hurricanes. And there's no line item right now to fund the overtime even if our existing people in the department that's short-staffed were even willing to accept the overtime. Because if they accept the overtime, they gotta come back in the next day very early in the morning and still pick up the trash and go back and pick up the recyclables. So there's a tremendous cost, ladies and gentlemen, to this process, to our taxpayers, particularly in the disposal fees. So what's a little-known fact is that you take our transfer station. We've opened that up to any resident who is willing to take the debris they may have to the transfer station, and we're not asking for any passes to be used. So we've eliminated that requirement. But what's a little-known fact is that we have to pay for the removal of that, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars the town has to pay to get rid of the debris and the waste that goes into the transfer station. So the other thing that we've seen down through the years is that for whatever the reasons, there's some areas where when we pick up storm debris from a tornado or hurricane, our personnel have been involved with massive general cleanups with trees being cut down that weren't damaged by the hurricane or tornado. And that has cost us a tremendous amount of money. So I wanted to be clear as to the reasons why during this last storm, wasn't it hurricane or tornado, why we're unable at this point to pick up any debris that's out there. But what we can do is, as I said, no passes required at the transfer station, and the town will bear the cost, like I mentioned, to dispose of that. And what we can do is if there are three-to-four-foot bundles tied up, we will pick those up as part of the regular municipal waste trash collection. We cannot pick up more than two or three bundles per week for this reason. The men who are picking up the trash, the municipal waste, will take each bundle, if there's one, two, or three, and it goes in the municipal waste truck. We cannot use those trucks for massive debris pickup because in the end, there won't be enough space in the truck to complete the municipal waste trash pickup. So we're willing to try to help with these small bundles every week, and that's what we can do. Next subject, financial update. Well, as you know, our fiscal year 2019-2020 budget is underway. We've had many workshops. Board of Finance has entertained many presentations. This budget will be finalized on March 30th. There will be a public hearing on April 2nd, and then there'll be a budget town meeting on May 6th. And those two meetings, April 2nd and May 6th, we're interested to hear what the public has to say about those budgets. I have some very good news for everybody tonight. That we have posted a very significant grand list increase, 2.8%. This is very significant in municipal government. By contrast, one of my colleagues in another town just had a Chamber of Commerce meeting and was touting significant growth, which was 1.2%. That 1.2% in the other town will yield a million dollars worth of incremental revenue. And this is because of all the economic development going on in town right now. What this 2.8% increase is going to yield is an incremental $2.3 million in revenue for the town of North Haven, primarily driven by the economic development. This comes at a great time for us. It comes at a great time because, number one, this will kick in starting July 1st. We don't have the impact of that in this current fiscal year. It comes at a time that we're preparing our budget with the incremental requests that we're getting. But most importantly, it gives us a cushion over some great uncertainty at the state level right now. And there is great uncertainty in terms of what the state budget could yield for towns like North Haven. So we go into this with the uncertainty that's looming across the horizon with a great cushion of about $2.3 million in incremental revenue. And ladies and gentlemen, those who are here tonight, those watching on North Haven TV, I'm going to tell you with 100% conviction and confidence, this trend will continue here in North Haven. There will be continued top-line revenue growth in the town. And I can say that with 100% conviction and confidence because I'm involved with every single economic development across the town, every single project I'm involved with. So I know it's coming down in the next couple of years. So I wanted to share that, and again, it comes at a good time. As some of the economic development, this is just a small example, Amazon will be fully up and running at the end of May. Leisure Care Assistant Living on Route 22 will be up and running somewhere in the middle of July of this year. The renovation at the North Haven Shopping Center continues. Millions and millions of dollars have been reinvested in that center and new businesses continue to come in. I anticipate by the end of this year, it'll be fully occupied. A major development for us is a project that I've been working with and Rich Lo Presti has been assisting me on this. Sun Belt Rentals at the corner of Universal Drive and Sackett Point Road, the old Earth Technology Building. The current business is moving out and downsizing. We're working with that CEO whom we know very well to find another place for that business in North Haven. And through the efforts of Rich, myself, and the landlord of that building, Sun Belt Rentals will be going in there, fully occupying that building at Sackett Point and Universal. And I'm pleased to announce, after two years of effort, that we'll be bringing in Adriana's Restaurant into North Haven. And that will go at the site of the old Leons. That was an interesting development. You know, I'm very friendly with the owners of Adriana's. They have a restaurant here in town, you may not realize, at Antonio's. I took the landlord of the plaza down to Adriana's, including the real estate commercial person who had listed it, and over the course of that lunch at Adriana's, we're able to put this deal together. That'll be a big upgrade there. And as Valerie will tell you, she always tells me in the office that North Haven needs another good major restaurant. So I'm pleased to announce that. And as we come to a close here on this overview, I wanted to let everyone know that on Monday, February 11th, North Haven has been chosen by Channel 8 News as the destination location. So will be featured on Channel 8 as a town on Monday, February 11th. Thank you. Okay.
I just have one question on something you said in the overview. The 2.8% increase, now as far as Amazon, I doubt that any of their personal properties in yet and is included on the October 1st grand list.
That's right.
And as you recall, it was the personal property that was going to be a major, the tax on their personal property, which is their business property, was gonna be a major source of our tax revenue from Amazon, especially in the first seven years when they're, they have the phase-in on the real estate. So assuming that, has any of the value of the Amazon construction, is that included? Because the building is pretty much up.
Yeah.
Is that in that 2.8?
Yeah, so this grand list growth is comprised of several different developments. Partial construction on Amazon, Land Rover dealership. We have been, what's a little-known fact here, ladies and gentlemen, is that we're working with a lot of companies here on expanding, expanding resources within those companies. Medtronics is a good example, which is currently the largest taxpayer in town. Well, the increase in their personal property from expansion within the building. C. Coles is another one, another good company here. So we're seeing growth within the existing businesses. And the grand list growth is a byproduct of all of that. Personal property increases on large taxpayers whom we're working with, Medtronics is an example, new businesses such as the Land Rover, partial construction, a small partial construction increase on Amazon, the partial construction that we captured on the Route 22 facility. And by the way, all these are creating new jobs here. And that's another mission that we're on. Create new jobs and bring in new businesses in the areas where the businesses should go. You're gonna hear a little more tonight on open space, and I have Lynn Sedoski here. As we develop the town, we're also very cognizant on maintaining the charm that North Haven has within the individual neighborhoods. So we're continuing on an open space mission here. And I'm grateful for the support I have from the public on the open space aspect, including this board's support on that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, that was the only question I had. Bill, did you have one?
Good, okay. So I want to let everyone know that, thank you. Sally has asked to put a couple of items on the agenda, so Sally, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. The first, I wanted to discuss the Board of Finance Subcommittee, sometimes it's called Study Group Subcommittee, that was formed last April to look at the fire department. And then I wanted to talk about the hiring of the new firefighters that you announced at the December Board of Finance meeting. But you know, before I go into all of that, you know, the people here are, many of them are regular attendees and are very familiar with the history of this. But you know, we have a live audience, so I feel, and I know we have a heavy agenda, but if you could just indulge me to give a quick background of this, and then I could make my points about the Subcommittee and the hiring, if I could just do a quick background. The intention, attention that has been on the fire department really started in the fall of 2017 and progressed to, you know, February of 2018 during the budget process, when the fire chief at the fire department workshop requested eight new firefighters and then with a plan for eight more the following year. And correct me if any of my background is incorrect. And just to have, just so you have some understanding of how the fire department is currently organized, you know, if you just put aside for a minute the two very recent new hirees and just look at the fire personnel that are working now, there are 32 firefighters, four lieutenants and 28 firefighters. So there's 32, and they work on four shifts, eight people per shift, and they work a 24-hour period of time, and then they're off for three days, and then they work another 24 hours. And the eight current people per shift are assigned, two to the fire rescue unit, which I call, it's also known as an ambulance, you know, the first medical unit. So there's two there, there's four on the engine, and there's two on our ladder truck. And so as I said, last year, the chief had requested four more firefighters at a presentation that was well-received and had, and every member of the Board of Finance gave great accolades for that presentation last year. But no new firefighters were added to the budget that was approved last May at the referendum for the current fiscal year that we're in, 1819. So he requested eight and were given none. In fact, I was the only elected official besides the Board of, the Fire Commission members that advocated for more firefighters. I thought a compromise was appropriate of hiring four, which would've been one per shift. But that idea was rejected, and then I continued a lot of research and came up with an alternative idea of what is known as weighted day duty, where you create a new shift of Monday through Friday during the daytime hours, with putting two people on during that shift to enable the second paramedic unit to be activated. And my thinking of doing that was because after evaluating all of the statistics, I determined that most, not all, but most of the contemporaneous or overlapping calls came in during that time. Obviously, they come in on weekends and at night, but by far, most of them occurred during that time. And in fact, most of the examples that the chief gave last year in his presentation of overlapping calls occurred Monday through Friday during the workday. So I had made that recommendation, first of four new firefighters and then weighted day duty. But again, nothing, the Board of Finance added no new personnel. But what did happen on April 18th of 2018 was the Board of Finance, through the initiation of the first selectmen, formed a committee or subgroup, it's called a lot of different things, but sort of a committee or subgroup of the Board of Finance that consisted of two members of the Board of Finance, Mr. Hallahan and the chairman, Mr. Monaco, as well as Mr. Swakowski, the finance director, and our fire chief, Chief Janicevsky. And so these four people were told to, were given the charge of looking into the fire department and coming up with recommendations. And in fact, I watched again recently the April 18th Board of Finance meeting, and at minute 11 of that meeting, the discussion of this, the fire department begins, and that's where Mr. Frida announced that there would be no adding of the firefighters for the 1819 current fiscal year, but that this group would be formed and that $140,000 would be put aside in the budget. And Mr. Monaco stated that the $140,000 would be a public safety line item, and that line item would be created for the purpose of enabling this committee to do its work and to do an analysis of the fire department, report back with recommendations in the fall. And as Mr. Monaco said, and I quote, this is around minute 14, he said, "And if the recommendations make sense," meaning the recommendations of the committee, "the 140 is there to fund the recommendations." So then I continued to watch the meetings through the fall. And after watching these meetings and hearing what Mr. Frida announced in December about the hiring of two new firefighters, I actually needed quite a bit of time to do my research, so I didn't put it on the agenda last month. I wasn't quite ready on our January 3rd meeting. So I put it on this month because, you know, I believe that process is just as important as policy. And I am unhappy with the process that was used to hire the two new firefighters. And keep in mind, I advocated for new firefighters last year. I acknowledge that we have higher medical calls in town. You often hear the statistic that 62% to 63% of our calls are medical in nature. But Mr. Monaco gave an interesting statistic after his evaluation through this subgroup, and he said that if you eliminate the 23% of false alarms or dispatch errors or cancellations, that it's really closer to 71% of our calls are actually medical in nature. So I acknowledge that the fire department needs help. The question is, what should that help be? And more importantly, how should it be effectuated as far as the budgetary process is concerned? And so that's why I put this matter on the agenda tonight, to talk about that process. And I just wanted to start with the September 19th Board of Finance meeting. Well, I did start, I already told you what was said April 18th. They formed the committee, they put aside $140,000. The $140,000 was put in the Personnel Policy section of the budget. And the, at the September 19th, 2018 meeting, the Board of Finance started to discuss some of the statistics that the study group were gathering, and some of them I've already given you. But I wanted to bring up, bring to your attention, Michael, and to the attention of the folks here and listening at home, something that you had said at that meeting during the discussion of the committee and of their task of analyzing statistics and making reports and recommendations. At minute 34 and 20 seconds during the discussion of the $140,000 and the special committee, you said, Michael, and I quote, "We cannot add full-time personnel during the middle of the fiscal year or at any time during the fiscal year because of the referendum passed in May. The $140,000 was put into the commission work group." So you had said, and again, "We cannot add full-time personnel during the middle of a fiscal year." And I also noticed in another meeting in October, October 17th, 2018, Mr. Katz was talking to you at minute 47 of that meeting about an unrelated matter. He was talking about an engineering position. And he said, and I quote, "Under the charter, we cannot make a new position in the middle of the fiscal year," unquote. And you audibly agreed with that. And so, you know, just continuing on with the timeframe, in October at the Board of Finance meeting, Mr. Monaco again reported that, I quote, "At minute 20, Mr. Monaco reported to the Board of Finance," I quote, "Data's been collected, they are, we are forming opinions, and we'll be sending to the Board of Selectmen to act and do what is necessary." And at minute 31, Mr. Hallahan, again, he was a member of this committee, again describes that they're in the process of making their recommendations and that they would be going to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. And that never really happened. So that, then we get to November 14th, the next Board of Finance meeting, around minute 34, the work of this work group committee again came up. Mr. Monaco was very restricted in his discussion because the report had just been issued, with the 28 to 30 recommendations had just been issued and sent by email to members of the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and I assume to the Fire Commission. So at the November meeting, although the analysis and work of this group was completed, they did their report, they made their recommendations, the discussion was very limited at that meeting because Mr. Monaco wanted to give the Fire Commission an opportunity to review the recommendations of the committee before there was public discussion. So that brings us to the meeting that really brought this to a head for me, which was the meeting on December 19th, 2018. And again, at minute 15 of that Board of Finance meeting, the discussion of the report of the study group had begun. And the, Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco, the two members of the Board of Finance that worked on this committee for all those months, both acknowledged that they had completed their work and that they felt that they, you know, complied with the mandate of the forming of the group and that... of the, of the forming of the group and that the recommendations were sent to the Fire Commission, but that it was their jurisdiction and that they are the policymakers for implementation. That is a quote from Mr. Monaco. And then the first selectman started to speak, and he said, and I quote, "No need for long narratives on this subject because here is what is happening. I authorized two new firefighters to the academy based on work of the committee and the Fire Commission asking for two firefighters." And that is a quote. And here is another quote from Mr. Frida, "Based on work of the subcommittee and based on the report back to me from the Fire Commission, they are asking for two firefighters, and they are going to get the two firefighters that's already in this budget. Everything else will be addressed in the workshops in January. That's it. That's what's happening," unquote. So here's, here's my issue. And, and you know, Michael, I've brought this up before. About three years ago, I had concerns about hires taking place in mid-fiscal year, and it was, one hire was in your office and another was in the building office. I don't know if you remember me bringing that issue up before the Board of, of Finance, and you guys pretty much said, you were the CEO, you could hire, you know, whoever you want during mid-fiscal year. But I'd like to know how you can reconcile what you said on the nineteenth, that we cannot add full-time personnel during the mid, middle of a fiscal year, with the fact that you, without consulting with the Board of Selectmen, without a vote on the Board of Finance, just stated that you've authorized the hiring of two new firefighters. And again, I'm talking about the process of the hiring, not necessarily whether, what, what the need is. That's a separate issue. The need of the fire department is a separate issue. I'm talking about the process of hiring. And so I wanted to ask you how you could reconcile your quote from September nineteenth about how we cannot hire during the middle of the fiscal year with the fact that you did.
Well, I could reconcile that very easily.
Okay.
Because the hundred and forty thousand dollars was put in the budget with the anticipation that we may have to hire two new full-timers. What you're missing is that in the past, we cannot hire additional full-timers that aren't in the budget somewhere for, for an expense. So the difference is that the hundred and forty thousand dollars was booked as a line item in that particular line with the anticipation that we could hire two more people. In the past, if the money's not there, which is what I was referring to in the past, we can't just add two full-timers without money being designated somewhere for that. So we can reconcile it very easily.
Okay. Well, the, the quote that I'm referring to at the September nineteenth meeting was during the discussion of the hundred and forty thousand dollars and the, the special committee. So I don't, you know, but here's, here's my response.
I think that was also the intent of the Board of Finance, that, that it would be, that it would be put in the budget just to provide that flexibility because of the current situation.
Well, well, that's why I started with, that's a good point, Bill, and that's why I started with going back to April eighteenth, which was the meeting where the Board of Finance, where the, this committee was formed. And it was clearly stated that the purpose of the hundred and forty thousand dollars was to, let me get the right quote here. Here is the quote from Mr. Monaco, "If the recommendations," meaning of the group, "make sense, the one hundred and forty thousand is there to fund the recommendations," unquote. That is at minute, between a minute eleven and fourteen on the April eighteenth meeting. Now, there was no mention of it being used specifically for firefighters. And let me, I have the report right here somewhere in this mess, and the hiring of two firefighters is not one of the recommendations. So if the one forty was put aside to effectuate the recommendations of that committee, then it should be used for one of their recommendations. And the only recommendation in this report, this is the report here, they have about twenty-eight different recommendations, the only recommendation in this report for hiring personnel, and believe me, this came as a shock to me, there was, and I'll read their, their only recommendation, "Hire two firemen paramedics for a Monday through Friday daytime-only shift." And of course, that shift would be subject to approval of the Firefighters Union because of the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement. I understand that, and I understood that last year when I recommended, this is basically the weighted, weighted day duty idea that I came up with as a second idea last year when we were discussing hiring new personnel. To my shock, after this committee and these two gentlemen, Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco, in a bipartisan fashion, after they looked at six months' worth of calls and talked to multitude, had multitudes of meetings and, and examined hundreds of documents, they came to the same conclusion that I did, that hiring two daytime, Monday through Friday people was, was the way to go. And that's their only recommendation in here for personnel. And, and that obviously is not happening. So to say that it's in the budget, well, it is, but it's, it's not only in the, but you're not only using the one forty. Let me just go back a bit. Let me just talk about what it costs to hire a fireman. It costs about a hundred and twenty thousand in wages and benefits alone. Is that correct? That's what Mr., pretty close, a hundred and twenty, maybe a hundred and thirty, and that is for wages and all the benefits. Whether that includes, excuse me, whether that includes the employment tax, tax, I don't know, the social security contribution the town has to make, you know, in addition to the withdrawal, I don't know. But there's also, there's also equipment that has to be bought for firefighters. So, you know, that one forty, so, so it's pretty, I would say one forty is pretty much closer to what it costs between wages, benefits, and equipment to hire one firefighter for the full year. So this one forty is hiring two with all those wages and benefits for half a year. It's the same amount. You know, two at half a year is the same as one for the full year, right? Okay. But that's not one of the recommendations in here. There are many recommendations in here. In fact, on tonight's agenda, we will be calling for a town meeting to approve one of the recommendations in here, which is to purchase a new engine at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I fully support. I have supported each of the apparatus, fire department apparatus that have come before the Board of Selectmen since I've been here, and I support this one as well. So I could see saying, let's put that one forty toward the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price. You're saying, well, it's in the budget, but it's not being used for one of the recommendations of the committee, number one, and number two, it's not just that one forty, because once you hire these two guys, they're going to be on, and when I say guys, I mean that in a gender neutral way, but once these two guys are hired, they're there, and they're going to be in that budget next year and next year and next year. It is a contractual obligation that's going to stay with the town, with the taxpayers beyond, so it's really going beyond the one forty. And I just am very concerned with what I see as a usurpation, really, of the budgetary process here. The people voted in May of two thousand and eighteen for a budget that had thirty-two firefighters on it, and in mid-fiscal year, there is now a budget with thirty-four. And that's going to be, and, and, you know, we're almost backed into a corner because they're going to put the two on one shift. It's almost guaranteeing that we're going to have to go forward and hire more. Well, that remains to be seen. My problem is how it was done, and I think process matters. And I'll give you another example, the, the police department. A few years ago, we hired two new police officers. And I remember specifically that in order to minimize the impact on the grand, on the mil rate and on the, the burden of the taxpayers, they were put in, one or two of them was put in mid-fiscal year. Remember, we hired one, we hired two, but they came in in the middle of the year to minimize the impact on the budget. But that was disclosed at the budget hearing, ladies and gentlemen. That was in the budget. That half-year was in there. It was disclosed, and when the people voted on it in May, they voted knowing that those hiries would be coming. When the people voted in May of two thousand and eighteen, they had no knowledge that there would be two people added. Now, it may very well be appropriate to add these two firefighters. You know what I've already said. I realize there's a problem. I realize we need new hiries. But I do not believe that these hiries were hired in a proper fashion according to our normal budgetary process. And I, I binge-watched all these meetings the other night, starting from April to December. And when you do that, it seems pretty clear that the intention was always just to hire, because of the amount that was put aside, the one forty, which conveniently is the precise amount needed for two firefighters for half a year. It almost seems like you wanted to hire them, but you didn't want to put it in the budget. You wanted them to come in through the back door. And that's what I find objectionable. I find it in, in violation of our normal budgetary process, and I think that, you know, if the intention was to hire them from the very start, they should have been included in the budget in the first place so that it could have been voted on. So that's why I put this matter on, to express my discontent with the process.
All right. Well, you know, I disagree with you, so I appreciate your opinion, and the bottom line is the people voted on a hundred and forty thousand in the budget based on the recommendations. But coming back to your point on policy, I said it at the Board of Finance meeting, I think it was in December, that it's the Fire Commission's recommendation that I'm going to be accepting. And I explained to the Board of Finance at that meeting, you have every right, we put this committee together, and they did a great deal of work. Ed Swinkowski, Rich Monaco, Mike Hallahan did a tremendous amount of work. They made recommendations. They went to the Fire Commission. The Fire Commission is the policy board. The Fire Commission reviewed the recommendations. The Fire Commission was very clear that they agreed with a lot of what was said in the presentation made by the Board of Finance Subcommittee. But the Fire Commission recommended the two hires, and I accepted the Fire Commission's recommendation because that's the policy. The Fire Commission is the policy board, and that's what we did.
Well, if they're the policy board, then why didn't you give them the eight when they requested eight in last budgetary session?
Well, that's a.
They're not the policy board. The Board of Finance makes the budget. They, they, they're the policy board only from the perspective that they, they implement and administer the department based on the money that the Board of Finance recommends at the budget, at the, at the, for the budget referendum that's approved. If, for you to say that, you grant, they're the policymakers, they wanted two, we gave them two, we have department heads from, and one is here right now. We have lots of department heads that come before the Board of Finance asking for personnel all the time. They're, they're in charge of policy.
You're missing, see, here's what you're missing.
What am I missing, Michael?
You're missing something very big, and you've been part of all the meetings.
Yeah.
What you're missing is we already had the hundred and forty thousand to hire the two firefighters. That was voted on by the public, and that's what you're missing. The difference is when you come in with eight as a request, it's not in the budget. That has to go to the workshop session. I've been very clear. We took the recommendation of the Fire Commission. We had a hundred and forty thousand put aside for the recommendation. We're not adding anything more to the budget other than what was in the budget. Now, you may disagree, but you're wrong, because this is what we're doing.
Well, I disagree because the one hundred and forty thousand, as Mr. Monaco clearly stated at the April eighteenth meeting, was put in to implement the recommendations of the committee, not the recommendations of the Fire Commission. If we were to implement the recommendations of the Fire Commission, we would have hired eight last year.
So why did you just say then, Mr. Monaco or Mr. Hallahan at the Board of Finance said they were going to submit their recommendations to the Fire Commission? Why did you say that? You just mentioned it.
Yeah, they did submit them.
So we took the Fire Commission's recommendations?
No, 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 no. The, Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco submitted their report, this report of their recommendations to the Fire Commission.
And the Fire Commission reviewed the recommendations. They accepted some of the content in the recommendation, and they came back to me and said, after we reviewed this, we requested two firefighters, which were in the budget at the hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, look, I respect all the time you've put into this.
They were not in the budget.
But I disagree with you on this.
They were not in the budget in the personnel, in the, they were not in the fire department budget under personnel. They were not included in the employment table in the last pages of the budget that lists each department with the numbers of people. They were listed as, it was listed on a, on a line item that was created out of thin air called "safety issues," and it was put in the Personnel Policy expense portion of the budget. It was not put in as, as for wages, and it was not reported in the budget as wages. It was reported in April that it would be used to implement the recommendations of the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee did not recommend hiring two firefighters.
You just said it was part of their recommendations, one of their recommendations.
No, I did not. Their only recommendation was that they hire two Monday through Friday daytime only. That was rejected by the, by the Fire Union and the Commission.
But that's two firefighters, right?
Only if they were for Monday through Friday daytime only. I'll read it. Hire two firemen.
That's how, that's how they do it. So you support.
So, all right, Brian, so, so Sally's just.
My question, my problem is with the process, sir, not the hiring.
Okay. So, look, look.
It says, "Hire two firemen for Monday through Friday daytime-only shift." That is the recommendation. And B, to utilize rescue two. Well, they're not utilizing rescue two. They're opening up another engine, unbelievably.
So the Fire Commission took the Board of Finance Subcommittee's recommendation to hire the two firefighters and change the work schedule to comply with what the chief, who's the expert, he is the expert in terms of where to deploy the manpower. Let me say this, folks. Look, I appreciate all the research Sally has done, all the time she's put in, but the bottom line on this is this. We have over fifty years of Fire Commission expertise, plus a fire chief who's outstanding at what he does, who before he was a fire chief, spent seventeen years on this fire department as both a volunteer and a paid person. So when it comes time to all the work that's been done, and I'm acknowledging that Sally did a lot of work here, the Board of Finance I mentioned did a tremendous amount of work, but in the end, it's the Fire Commission's recommendation. That's the recommendation.
Great. But, you know, let.
Sally, we appreciate what you're saying about it being, you know, a question of process more than the result. But, you know, I think it was a, a situation that was evolving or that was fluid. I mean, that's why it was put in as safety, I think the actual, the actual line item in the budget was, um, safety issues, you know, and it could have, it could have been maybe something different.
Yes. It's on page twenty-five of the budget under Personnel Policy Expenses called "Safety Issues." One hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, it clearly was something that got approved, and you know.
By who?
Yeah, it was part of, as part of the budget process.
Right.
You know, a line item was there.
But, but the public was told.
Do we want a, a government that's so hamstrung by process that it can't be responsive to the needs of the, the public that it serves? And I'd say the answer's no. So I mean, I, I appreciate process, but sometimes process is, is your own enemy.
Well, actually.
Regulation sometimes is your own enemy in terms of, we, we're burdened by so many state regulations that, that are unfunded mandates that we have, we have no flexibility to have to follow. So sometimes you need, you need, you know, from, you know, you run your own business and Mike's run, you know, large businesses, I mean, sometimes you need flexibility. I think it was put in on a, you know, on a discussion basis of safety issues, and you need that flexibility.
It was put in to offer that flexibility. It was authorized by the public.
But that doesn't mean we don't appreciate what you're saying from a process standpoint, you know, and, you know, and you can always maybe do better, but sometimes you can't always foresee the future, you know? And, you know, I think your suggestion about, you know, your suggestions about, about maybe just having them on day, on a day shift, you know, you know, at least from a, a practical standpoint, from us not being firemen made some sense. But Jake made a very good point that, you know, I think, you know, the people are on the same, the same group of people from, you know, and I know this from the military and, you know, from, and from, you know, he wanted them to be a team, you know, and like, you know, so there's other ways of looking at it that maybe we don't understand because, you know, if you have them just being on there, you know, and rotating those five, five, five days, they actually never became part of the eight-man team that already existed separately. So you can see other signs of, or other ways of arguing it or looking at it. But, you know, we don't, we don't, I don't think anybody doesn't understand, you know, the importance of, in, in almost every case, maintaining a strong process, which I think we've always tried to do.
The, well, first of all, the weighted day duty or Monday through Friday daytime-only shift was not just my idea. It was the recommendation of Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco. After hours and hours of research and evaluating six months' worth of, of fire department calls, they concluded that that was the best first step to alleviate the number of medical calls and to alleviate the problem of overlapping calls. So they came to the same conclusion that I did. That was their recommendation, but that is not what is happening. And to say that you're just following. And to say that you're just following the Fire Commission, you didn't follow them last year when they asked for eight, you put aside 140,000 in April, you said, and I quote, "It is there to fund the recommendations of the group." It is not being used to fund the recommendations of the group. It is being funded to hire two new firefighters and to, again, usurp the normal budgetary process.
Yeah, I disagree. I mean, we can debate this all night. I appreciate the work you did, but I am in total disagreement with this, and it's because of the policy, and I'll agree with you on one thing.
All right.
Policy. It's because of the policy that I took the recommendations of the Fire Commission. They're the policy board. They're the ones who are elected officials by state statute. They are the people who make the recommendations. And I'll say it again, the work that was done by the Board of Finance Subcommittee, the time that they spent, the hours, Mike and Rich and Ed, I give them a tremendous amount of credit. In the end, one of their recommendations, and Sally even said it, was two firefighters. The Fire Commission took that recommendation, and because they're the policy board, they then changed the work schedule, and that is in compliance with the policy. Next, you have something to share about.
The recommendation was daytime, that was rejected. You know, if that was rejected, and so they're getting their two firefighters, so don't say that we're following the recommendation of Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco's and Mr. Swinkowski's hard labors, because that was not their recommendation at all.
Well-
And I still want to know what you meant when you said, and, you know, if anybody at home has their computer on, they could click onto the town website and go to the September 19th Board of Finance meeting at minute number 34, 20 seconds. What did you mean when you said, quote, "We cannot add full-time personnel during the middle of the fiscal year, or at any time during the fiscal year, because the referendum passed in May"? What did you mean when you said that?
I just explained it. What I meant was you can't add incremental expenses to a budget by hiring full-timers. This is different. We had 140,000 in the budget that was put aside for the possibility of hiring two firefighters. So we can debate this all night long, but you know what? You and I are going to remain in disagreement on this. And I am firmly entrenched in the position that I just mentioned. We agree on a lot, Ms. Bohemi and I, Sally and I, this one we're a total opposite, we're miles apart on.
I am firmly entrenched in the fact that that 140 was put aside to fund recommendations of this committee, and it was not done so in that fashion.
And I disagree with you.
So, there we go. So let me do number two on my thing here, which was to just, and this was basically put on in response to a couple of things. One was the, part of the Public Works Workshop back at the January Board of Finance meeting, and then the article that appeared in the paper on Tuesday, February 5th, about the middle school. And I'm, you know, I had requested that Mr. Johns attend tonight, and he is not here, which I assume he could not make it or did not want to make it, but Mr. Gary Johns is the chairman of the Middle School Building Committee. Now, you might think, that school's been up and going for a couple of years, you know, the committee's over. They've been meeting regularly for seven years, and they're still meeting, trying to finish the project. So it's not over. And years ago, during the development of the project and the actual construction, we were getting regular updates here at the Board of Selectmen meeting for Mr. Johns. Every now and then, he'd show up. So, you know, I'm a little disappointed that those stopped, and that he's not here tonight. But here's what happened. Let me just say, my concern is about the track around Vanacore Field. That was included, that was listed in the budget that was presented to the taxpayers prior to the June 17th, 2014 middle school bonding referendum. About 350 or 360,000 dollars was included in that budget for the track. And the track is not done, and it doesn't look like it's going to be done. For the past couple of years, every time I ran into Mr. Johns when I was here at Town Hall for my work, I'd say, you know, "Gary, what's going on with the track"? And he'd say, "We'll see, we don't know, we don't know." And then, all of a sudden, at the January 16th Board of Finance meeting, we had the Public Works Workshop, and one of the presentations there was to redo the track. So the taxpayers are being asked again to pay for the track that goes around the Vanacore football field. The reason why it was incorporated as part of the middle school project is because the middle school uses the track for gym, and I also think they have a track team, and of course, the high school uses it for gym and track as well. So that's why it was included in the middle school building project. So at the Public Works presentation, we heard a request for one of two ways to replace the track, either 250,000 to resurface it, or 700,000 to take off the surface there that's no good, fix underneath, you know, the cheap way and the expensive way. Let me make it short as I can. Either the 250,000 dollar shortcut way, or the 700,000 dollar more detailed replacement of the track. And so I was very disappointed to hear that the Middle School Building Committee failed in its obligation to provide that track that was included.
Well, that's not the case. I hope you realize that.
Well, okay.
So-
So they are going to-
So you're making an assumption that the track is not going to be done. It's a wrong assumption.
I know, no, I didn't say that. I said, I was very disappointed that the Middle School Building Committee failed to do the track. It was included in the budget, and it's not in the budget.
How do you know they're going to fail to do the track?
Because when, at the Board of Finance meeting, when it was presented, Ms. Fasickio, who's on the Board of Finance and on the Middle School Building Committee, said that there was no more money to do the track, and that probably the 700,000 dollar way would be the best way to go. That the 700,000 dollar way being the one that Lynn Sedowski presented, for the town to pay for a new track. I'm not saying it's not going to be done, I'm saying-
Yeah, well, the town is not going to be paying for the track. Now, Lynn Sedowski's one of our finest employees, okay? So Lynn did what she, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, so there's no need to be exasperated. I'm trying to explain it to you. Okay, so you seem very uptight tonight, you really do.
I'm not uptight, I'm mad.
So there's no reason to be mad.
I'm mad.
Because-
There, I said it.
I can, you know, we've worked together for a long time, but I want to tell you something. You never see me worry, do you? I have total confidence in everything we do, and this government will produce a positive outcome. When you see me worry, then maybe you, then I could say you should start worrying.
Okay.
This middle school project, under the auspices of some of the finest North Haven citizens, both Republicans and Democrats alike, an even-balanced middle school committee, have worked tirelessly for years. Every vote that's taken is generally unanimous vote. There's give and take in discussions on each and every issue. But this middle school account is not closed out yet. We had the unintended consequence of the floor that started to warp. A floor, by the way, that the Middle School Building Committee tried to save the taxpayers 165,000 dollars to resurface the floor, which would have presented a bit of a character of the old gym by resurfacing that floor. Well, as it turned out, due to the humidity contrast and changes that were unforeseen, the floor started to separate. So now, the middle school committee is contemplating how to correct that. It may mean replacing the floor. But that's why there's a contingency. I mean, people shaking their heads, I don't know why you're shaking your head, these are the facts, folks. These are the facts. The facts are, the middle school committee, under the supervision of the chairman and a construction attorney, who teaches construction law to other attorneys across the state, we have a contingency account. The project has been incredibly well managed. So to say that the taxpayers are going to have to pay to do the track, that's not determined yet. Lynn was doing her job putting in a future capital expense, which will be taken out of this budget process because it's undetermined how much money's going to be left to perform what needs to be done in the middle school.
Well, first of all, my comments about the Public Works presentation by the Public Works Director-
Right, right.
Was in no way intended as any, and I don't see how it could even be interpreted as any type of criticism of Ms. Lynn Sedowski.
No, she's doing her job.
Has I have a great rapport with her. What I was simply saying was, it wasn't until I heard at that Public Works Budget Workshop, the request for the town to pay either 250,000 or 700,000 to do the track-
Okay, well, that's a valid point, I see your point.
I think that's what I said before.
Okay, but it seems like you were jumping to a conclusion that the taxpayers, I mean, that's not determined yet.
Well, okay, well, the request was made by the Public Works Director to the Board of Finance for either 250,000 or 700,000 to do the track. And I'm sitting there going, hmm, because I was at that meeting, I said, hmm, I guess there's not enough money in the middle school building committee project left to do it. Because Mr. Johns, for the past couple of years, has been telling me, every time I asked him, are we going to get that track done? He kept saying, "I don't know yet, I don't know if there's going to be the money, we're still waiting, blah, 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 blah." So it wasn't until she made that presentation and requested money for the track, that it occurred to me that maybe there wasn't enough money for the track. And that was sort of cemented by what Ms. Fasickio said at the Board of Finance meeting, saying, she said, "There is no more money." And then I read, then after that, that was back in January, then a couple of days ago, this article comes out that you're alluding to, where the Middle School Building Committee is, Mr. Chairman, its chairman, Mr. Johns, is saying that they're going to redo the floor. So I'm like, well, I thought there was no money. Now, there is money, but it's being redone to do a floor. And here's the problem that I have, and why I wanted Mr. Johns here. So I guess I'm going to have to go to two more meetings, the next Board of Ed meeting and the next Middle School Building Committee meeting. I wanted to ask why the floor is being done rather than the track, because he says in this article that the floor is playable or usable. Let me get the right word, geez, I should have underlined it. But he says in here that the gym floor is usable. Whereas the track, also at the Public Works Workshop, the Public Works Director presented a report that was done delineating a long list of problems with the track. And I've been on the track, I've seen the problems with it, it's worn, it's got humps in it from roots, it's got cracks, and we've got middle school and high school kids running their hearts out on this thing. And so I wanted to ask Mr. Johns tonight whether or not the Board of Ed was consulted about which of the two last remaining projects, replacing a gym floor that's usable, or a track that I believe is dangerous. Which one should we be putting our money on? They were both included in the project, and you're absolutely right. The original Ed spec for the floor was a replacement.
Yeah.
And they decided to do just a refinishing. And it really didn't save the taxpayers money, because the taxpayers have committed to bond the 69.8 million. What it did was, by refinishing it rather than replacing it, they were saving money for other stuff, so.
So I think, so I understand how you derive that conclusion.
Okay.
But I'm telling you tonight to consider that this Middle School Building Committee account is not finalized yet. There's still contingency, and I think that when you speak with Mr. Johns, that you'll find that the Building Committee unanimously voted that because the gym floor is inside the school, that their first objective was to complete the school and its interior, with the track potentially being addressed with whatever may be left over. So now I want to share something else with you, okay?
Okay.
So in the spirit of transparency, that Mr. Johns was kind enough to send me this today to give to each of you.
Oh, lovely.
So before you call Mr. Johns, I would suggest that you read that. This is a narrative that he put together about the Middle School Building Committee and the timelines. So you can read that, and then certainly feel free to call Mr. Johns. And Mr. Johns wanted me to tell everybody, they, this past Monday, they had a meeting, a middle school meeting, where they covered all this. So sometimes we direct people to go to those meetings, because that's where you learn what's happening, and that meeting's televised. So Mr. John has extended the invitation, Gary Johns, for people to go to the Middle School Building Committee, so you can address the questions there. So there's a good narrative for you, okay?
Yeah, I'll go to it. They're at, usually Monday mornings at 8:00 in the morning or 8:15. I went to most of them that first year that they weren't televised, but I haven't seen them. I was relying on the newspaper article that said they do have money to redo the floor, and I was just, put it on the agenda because I wanted to ask Mr. Johns, which one, in his opinion, is more dangerous for the children? The bad floor or the bad track? So if we have limited resources, you know, that's what I wanted to know, and-
So take a look at that, read that.
Yeah, it's a little too voluminous for me to, you know, unless we have a timeout, and I don't want to call timeout, because we have more to do.
We have a lot more to do on this agenda. But that's kind of, Bill, that's for you to read too, so.
I already read it.
Once again, Gary, thank you. And by the way, I said to Gary, you don't need to come tonight, because I know enough about this. Gary was kind enough to give me the report, and he's willing to answer any questions or listen to any comments at the monthly Building Committee meeting. Now, I think it's monthly, right? They're doing it every month?
Sometimes it's every couple of weeks, it depends on the issue.
It depends, they called them sporadically as well.
Yeah, so they're posted and they're televised.
And also, let me make it very clear that during the past years, I have commended the work of the Middle School Building Committee, both, you know, publicly at meetings and in my newspaper column. There's a lot to be proud of with that project, but there are issues. And I just, you know, since we're near the end, you know, I wanted to ask that question. So I have commended them. You talked about their volunteer work. I understand all that. I'm just trying to figure out how much money's left, and where is it going, and which problem is more dangerous to our children.
And by the way, too, what you've said, what you first said about how much money's left, that's still undetermined, ladies and gentlemen. There's still contingency, we still have the expenses on the floor, and the line items within this budget, they could fluctuate, and this will close out sometime late this summer or early this fall, and then we'll have a final calculation as to what the balance may be.
Right. Well, I was relying on Ms. Fasickio's comment at the January 16th Board of Finance meeting. She is the vice chairman of the Middle School Building Committee, and she clearly said, there's no money left. So that's why all this that happened-
All right, so I understand why you put that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, I'm going to ask Sally and Bill to read the next set of resolutions and paragraphs. I have Andy Bevelacqua here, whom we work very closely with, our town engineer, who's sort of been our right-hand man for me personally, working, works under Lynn, but he's done a great job in helping us work with the attorneys on what you're going to see on these easements that need to be conveyed. So Sally, I'll give you a little timeout here, I'll have Bill read the first one, and you come back to the second one, okay?
All right.
All right, William?
I think item number seven on the agenda then, which is to consider and vote upon whether to authorize First Selectman Michael J. Frida to execute a grant of easement on behalf of the town of North Haven pertaining to the granting by 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC to the town of North Haven of a 4,427-plus-square-foot easement on property owned by 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC at 409 to 415 Washington Avenue, North Haven, Connecticut, for the purposes of the town's maintenance of an existing sewer line owned by the town.
All right, so now I'm going to ask Andy to come up before Sally reads the actual resolved resolution. Andy?
So what I wanted to kind of talk about, the first item, if you look on the map that I just provided you, is there's a small easement on the right-hand side of the map, 4,427 square feet. square feet. That is the sewer that was put in to service Hortonbrook Industrial Park. That was constructed about 10 years, 10, 12 years ago or so. And there was a sewer that was installed that connected Defco Park Road and a couple of businesses there and tied it into the existing pump station that used to service the Pratt &amp; Whitney facility. The town has essentially taken over control of that pump station and the operation of that pump station and maintenance of that pump station. And so the first item on your agenda there is basically to provide an easement to the town for that 4,427-square-foot section, which basically, that's where the sewer runs, is under that section. So the 415 Washington Ave. Associates, they're providing that easement to allow us to go in and maintain the sewer. This is probably something that should have been done a while ago, but that was something that they're formalizing right now. And all this is kind of contained within the agreement between the town and Amazon and 415 Washington for the Amazon project to move forward. So this is just kind of satisfying that, one of the terms of that agreement.
Okay, Sally, I know you had a chance to review the document, Bill, the document that's in our packet here. Do you have any questions for Andy on this, because he's more than willing to answer the questions?
On this one, I do not have any questions.
Okay. So Andy, I want to put you in the on-deck circle, use a baseball analogy. We're going to have Sally read the resolution, and then we'll move to the next subject. Sally?
Yes, number eight, resolved. First Selectman Michael J. Frida is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of North Haven the grant of easement wherein 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC is grants, I don't know about that, grants to the Town of North Haven of 4,427-square-foot-plus-or-midas easement area as shown on a map entitled, "Property Easement to be Transferred to the Town of North Haven by 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC, dated as of June 13, 2018, and prepared by Langdon, Connecticut, Inc." So I'll move that resolution as read.
Thank you. So we have a motion?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bill, I'll ask you to read number nine, Sally will read number 10, and we'll bring Andy back up between nine and 10.
The next item is to consider and vote upon the acceptance of the Town of North Haven of a quitclaim deed with covenants from 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC of certain land consisting of two parcels as described in Exhibit A to said quitclaim deed with covenants for the purposes of maintaining the sewer line owned by the town on the subject property.
Andy?
So thank you again. So essentially, what this does is this covers what's shown as proposed parcel A on the map that I handed you. And that, essentially, they're going to quitclaim the parcel that the existing pump station resides on right now, as well as the section of what's called Nummi Road, which is where the sewer that services the Hortonbrook Industrial Park as well as the Amazon facility. That's where the sewer goes through and connects off into Washington Ave. So they're going to quitclaim the pump station property and their rights to the Nummi Road section. And that'll allow the town to, you know, to basically continue what we've been doing for many years, which is to maintain the pump station and maintain that sewer line.
Okay, Sally, I know you had a question.
Yeah, well, just so everybody at home can follow along, both of these agreements are with 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC. Those are the folks that own the property that the Amazon is on.
Right.
I just, you might have addressed some of these during your presentation, but I was trying to read the map, and I might not have heard every word. I'm most interested in the covenants. The first one, you know, to maintain the pump station's mechanical systems. I mean, how old is it again? You said it was the sewer line that went in, 12 years ago?
12 years ago.
But how old is?
Yeah, the pump station, I don't know the actual date, but it's probably 25, 30 years ago that that went in. It was quite a while ago. It was put in for Pratt &amp; Whitney. Pratt &amp; Whitney built that pump station when they discontinued the use of their wastewater treatment plant that they had on site.
Okay.
And they put that pump station in, and they put that pump station in and tied it into the sewer in Washington Ave.
Hooked up with us.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I figured. And I assume it's in working order.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Right, because we are, you know, you say that we've been taking care of it. Public Works Director is nodding yes. We've been maintaining it for a long time, anyway.
Correct.
And the question I really had, and it's more of a legal question, so if you can't answer it, I can contact the town attorney. Number three, it says the town guarantees, and that's a scary word for lawyers, guarantees. We don't like to guarantee anything. The town guarantees that there will always be available for use by the company in any development on the company property, an average of 250,000 gallons of sewage discharge per day. You feel comfortable with the word guarantee?
Well, it's an absolute term, no question. But this follows the agreement that the town signed with Amazon and 415 Washington Partners. That was part of the overall agreement, and that's why it appears in here. And it appears verbatim pretty much as to the original agreement that was signed by the town. So this is just kind of a carryover from that prior agreement that helped to bring Amazon into town.
And the 200, I'm sorry.
No, okay, you said it's language from the agreement between 415 and Amazon?
And the town. The town has a party to that agreement as well.
Which agreement was that?
Well, that was the agreement that essentially brought Amazon into town. There were certain terms and conditions that the town agreed to and Amazon provided.
The tax incentive agreement? It couldn't have been in that?
No.
No, it must have been. I was looking at it the other day. It goes way back.
So please understand on this that the 250,000 gallons, you know, that's already been vetted out with the WPCA. There's capacity there. So when we say in this legal document that the town guarantees it, that's with the advice of Viola, with the WPCA. So there's systems and procedures here that we talk to, in this case, the WPCA and Viola.
Well, the only reason why that word jumped out, you could see I underlined it, because it jumped out at me. It's just, like I said, it's not a great word when you're the one guaranteeing. You know, so I'll just, because usually, even though these are covenants that run with the land with this quitclaim deed, it's kind of like a contract here, as far as spelling out obligations by the town. And I understand, you know, maintaining, we've been doing it anyway. I have no problem with one and two. But when you're guaranteeing something, usually we have what's called, a legal term is called force majeure. It's a term that is used in contracts to protect against unforeseeable circumstances that prevent a party from fulfilling a contractual obligation. And I don't see any type of qualification of that in here, so. But I understand what you're saying, Michael, about Viola being comfortable with the gallons.
The capacity, the capacity, right.
Yeah, it was just the word guarantee, so other than that, I have, that was my only real question.
And by the way, Sally, this document we see tonight has been reviewed by the town council, who's comfortable with that also.
Yes, all right. Well, then I'm going to, who did it? So I can call him or her and ask them about that word.
Jeff.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Okay.
It does give us like a reasonable period of time to remedy it.
Right.
You know, further on. Also, I think, you know, on the other side, which, you know, if it exceeds the 250, if the company exceeds it, it does indicate that they, that results in damage to the pump station, the company shall be liable.
Right.
So I think it does have some protection for us in terms of.
You know, if I'm being overly cautious, then guilty as charged.
How do you actually monitor the 250? I mean, how do you?
Oh, the flow meter.
Is there a flow meter on it that gauges it?
Yeah, because they get charged per, right? They're going to be paying the commercial rate, I would assume.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll know.
Yeah, there are flow meters.
But so far, that's just an estimate that they would have less than 250. We really, till I actually.
Yeah, and we fully expect it to be a lot less than 250.
All right, it was just that one word, and if it could have been qualified, I have no problem going forward with it at all, okay? Because it's been going on anyway.
So is it your turn to read that?
It's my turn.
Okay.
Number 10, resolve the Town of North Haven accepts the quitclaim deed with covenants from 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC for the real property described in Exhibit A to said quitclaim deed with covenants. So I will move that resolution as read.
Okay. Thank you for the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number 11, I'm going to ask, and this is Bill's turn to read, and then I'm going to give some perspective on this, okay? William?
Thank you. To consider, next item is to consider and vote upon whether to authorize the First Selectman, Michael J. Frida, to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the estate of Ramon F. Neal in connection with the purchase of certain real property known as 311 Middletown Avenue, North Haven, by the Town of North Haven, for the purchase price of $80,000, which real property is being acquired by the town for permitted open space use.
Okay, so this is a parcel of property that I've been in discussions with for many years with Peters Rock Association. I have a great relationship with all of the members of Peters Rock. They do a wonderful job for us. They help us with fall events, many events at the site. And in my discussions with the leadership of this association down through the years, on and off, they would ask me about this property that is somewhat contiguous. So as part of our open space initiative, that we, through the efforts of Lynn Sadowski and the Clean and the Open Space Commission, whom we reactivated, we looked at this property, and it went for sale. And the price of it was roughly $120,000. So we made an offer at $80,000 because there is some remediation and some deconstruction costs that the town would have to incur. Because it was in a probate estate, because there were family members who weren't totally in agreement, it took some time. But tonight is the culmination of probably a two-year on and off series of discussions. And we have one of our longstanding North Haven residents, Joan Mazurk, here tonight, who has been so involved with this association in that area for decades here in North Haven, a good friend of this government, Joan Mazurk and her husband, Bob. And she called me the other day that she expressed a great deal of delight with this. So this allows us to buy the property, to deconstruct it, and to allow the expansion of Peters Rock for other events up there in an effort to capture this as open space and protect any development there, because if we go forward with this tonight, then there'll be no development there. It'll be granted and utilized by Peters Rock and the wonderful people who are part of it. Lynn Sadowski, would you like to come up and comment?
Lynn Sadowski, Director of Public Works. Mike, you've kind of said it all. So it's a 1.05 acre piece. It is sought after by Peters Rock Park Association, but also by the community garden. So the members of the Conservation Commission use it a lot. Folks can now access the property for parking. You can hike on the north and west side of Peters Rock Park, access the community garden whenever you'd like. And it is right off of Route 17, 311 Middletown Avenue. It's a great piece, as Mike said. It's been in an estate. Raymond Neal passed away sometime last year, maybe the year prior, and the parcel became available. It did go into probate, so we have been negotiating with them for some time. And the appraised value was 120,000, but we do need to remove a dilapidated structure and dispose of it that's on site. But it's a beautiful piece, very nice piece of property, surrounded on three sides by town land. Thank you.
Would you like to read number, Sally, go ahead.
First, congratulations on being Person of the Week.
Oh, thank you.
And the Courier, wow.
Thank you.
And what is your estimate of the demolition?
Somewhere between 25,000 and 35,000. So we put a cushion in for 40,000. That's why we took that off the price.
Thank you.
Would you like to read number 12, Sally?
Sure. Resolve that the First Selectman, Michael J. Frida, is authorized to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the estate of Ramon F. Neal in connection with the purchase of certain real property known as 311 Middletown Avenue, North Haven, by the Town of North Haven, for the purchase price of $80,000. So I will move as read.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and resolution passes. All right, so item number 13, this is a subject we have been talking about. Bill, I think it's your turn to read here.
Thank you. To consider and vote upon recommending, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board of Finance, that the town meeting consider approval of a sum not to exceed $750,000 to be appropriated from the fund balance of the Town of North Haven for the purpose of purchasing a 2019 fire engine pumper.
So this is a procedural issue, as you know, Sally and Bill. Tonight, we are looking to handle this through a town meeting, so we would need procedurally to vote on this tonight and to move forward with it in item number 14. But are there any questions, first of all, before we get to reading the resolution?
No, excuse me. We talked, this was discussed at the Board of Finance, and I made my position of support of the purchase pretty clear and why, you know, there certainly, we need it.
And we're very fortunate, as we mentioned, I think, at the Board of Finance meeting, that our fund balance is up about 8.5%. The rating agencies are thrilled with the financial performance, so we can exercise this expense out of that and continue to move forward. So, and it gives the fire department a much-needed apparatus. Bill?
Especially because, I think, as they pointed out, that it's the pumper that we need.
Yes.
You know, that I think has that capability, which, you know, which is really necessary, you know, on this engine in particular.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Yes, I, no, we just considered it. I'll do the motion now. Number 14, resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board of Finance, that the town meeting consider approval of a sum not to exceed $750,000 to be appropriated from the fund balance of the Town of North Haven for the purpose of purchasing a 2019 fire engine pumper. So I will move the resolution as read.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We move to a town meeting with this resolution. All right, so William, if you could read 15.
Number 15, which is exactly as Mike was saying, to consider and vote upon a call for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, February 25, at 6:30 PM, in the upstairs conference room number one of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to consider and act upon the following.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move the resolution. This is just a call for the town meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we've just voted before to recommend the purchase, now we're calling it. So I will move this resolution, that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners and Board of Finance, a sum not to exceed, wait a minute. That's the same one as we just did.
That's what, that is what we'll go to the town.
Oh, 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 okay.
Voting to call for the town meeting.
Okay, so consider, I'm sorry, you're right. So resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board of Finance, a sum not to exceed $750,000 be appropriated from the fund balance of the Town of North Haven for the purpose of purchasing a 2019 fire engine pumper. So I will move the resolution as read.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item 16.
This is a reappointment of Eleo Floriano, 7 Lucy Court, North Haven, Connecticut, 06473, as the building official for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Okay.
I'll second that appointment.
All right, motion and a second. Eleo, thank you for the great job you do for the Town of North Haven as our building official. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sally?
I'll move the property tax refunds listed in the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Just looking at them quickly. See if there's any there. I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next regular meeting of our Board of Selectmen here will be Thursday, March March 7th, here upstairs at Town Hall in our conference room. And now we're at item number 18, public comment. Tom White.
Tom White, Summer Lane, I just wanted to make an observation that I have seen over a period of time, that attention and focus on false alarms and protective services in the protective services industry is troubling to me. They should be merely regarded as alarms and warrant a legitimate response until they are hopefully deemed false. Situations have arisen where the perpetrator has coerced those present to reply on a call back that the alarm is false, escalating the threat to safety. Therefore, a physical alarm response is always necessary to determine what exists and render the call safe. There seems to be the notion that an alarm suspected as false should require some kind of diminished response. That is always unsafe. I ask that alarms are not, and not false alarms, be recognized in assessing and deployment or acquisition of personnel. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Mrs. Barrett.
Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. Couple things regarding the renovation of the gym floor. The like-new renovation of the gym floor and the resurfacing of the track were, in fact, as Ms. Bwamey pointed out, budgeted items. So that money was actually spent.
Budgeted in the middle school.
Budgeted in the middle school building committee project. And in fact, the original schematic cost estimate for the like-new renovation of the gymnasium was $2,567,670. So, in other words, all of the money that was actually invested in restoring the floor, painting it, putting in the wall padding and so forth, is basically all money that's thrown out the window now, because they have to start all over again and invest in replacing the floor.
Were you at the middle school meeting this Monday?
I watched it on TV, yeah.
So I would suggest that you go to the next meeting and ask that question.
Yep.
But I'm going to stand by what I said earlier, that this budget has been really well-maintained by these building committee members, and of course, we have the clerk of the works. So there's a lot of expertise here, folks, on this project. So I caution, I give a cautionary tale not to create false alarms, because this is being managed properly, and in the end, we'll find out exactly what needs to be done.
Right, I'm not causing any false alarms, I'm just reporting the facts. And in fact, at that meeting, this past Monday, Chuck Warrington, who is the project manager, said that they have retained $225,000 to replace the floors, and Mr. Johns thinks that this will actually be too low, and that they will have $224,000 remaining in the middle school building committee budget. That's after, out of a total of 69 million, they have $224,000 left. So, as Ms. Bwamey pointed out, both the track and the gym floor represent liabilities and, you know, potential for both students and members of the community to trip. So I think that both are real concerns, and I think that they are deserving of attention. However, I don't think that the taxpayers should have to pay twice for it. Regarding the firefighters, and the point that was just made about the total number of calls versus, you know, calls subtracting off any type of false alarms, I actually looked at the histogram that the fire chief presented, and as I mentioned, because I did attend the fire commission meeting, if you look at the actual total number of calls between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, 74% of all calls occur during that time. If you look 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it's 66%, and 9:00 AM, I'm sorry, yeah, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, it's 56%. And as Mr. Monaco pointed out, 71% of all calls, if you subtract off the calls that wind up being false alarms, are in fact medical. So I think the real issue, as Mr. Monaco and Mr. Hallahan discovered, is how best to surgically address this issue of the increasing number of medical calls. And in fact, very simplistically, if 71% of all calls are medical, then why don't we have the supply accommodating the demand? Why don't we have 71% of all of the fire department vehicles in their fleet ready to react to a medical call? And 71% of all the firefighters, in fact, be paramedics, ready to call, be respond, not just to BLS, but to ALS responses? I think the plan to add two more firefighters to just one shift does not address the issue across all four shifts of increasing medical calls. And in fact, in my opinion, sending a fire truck to a medical call, particularly a pumper truck, is a misuse of resources. Those large vehicles are gas guzzlers, they are filled with water, they block the traffic in town, there's significant wear and tear on these million-dollar vehicles, which of course result in increased repair costs, and most importantly, then they're unavailable to respond to fires. So I think that these are the types of things that the workshop was trying to address. And in fact, even if we increase the number of firefighters by eight in total, we still will not activate the second medical response vehicle. So we're still dealing with the same issue of being unable to respond to medical calls and still using big fire trucks to respond to them.
Did you address this at the commission?
I did, I absolutely did.
What was their response?
I asked him very, I asked the fire chief very specifically, what does he think the addition of two firefighters will have on medical calls? And the basic answer is, at this point, it's not going to be a lot, because if you really think about it, it's only one shift.
So he gave you the answer, then?
Right.
So that's the answer.
So in other words, this particular decision to add two firefighters just to the end of the line, rather than surgically address the source of the problem, the source of the problem is between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, if you can do that, ideally seven days a week, but if we could do it Monday through Friday, we have the precedent of hiring the retired police officers as the supernumeraries.
So why don't you accept the fire chief's recommendation that he doesn't want to do that? He's the expert.
My suggestion is that why don't we hire two paramedics to work Monday through Friday during some portion of that seven-to-seven period to specifically address this issue?
And you asked that question at the last commission meeting?
I have suggested it, it has been suggested, and the fire commission has clearly dismissed it.
Okay.
And getting back to the point of what was presented by the workshop, and that the $140,000 was specifically set aside in the budget to address the specific issues and the recommendations of the workshop, if, in fact, the suggestion of the workshop was the proposed detailing, I'm sorry, the proposal detailed the hiring of two additional firefighters slash paramedics to work Monday through Friday, daytime shift only. That was the recommendation of the workshop. And the commission responded by saying the best way to utilize the $140,000 is to hire two full-time firefighters that will be assigned for duty by the chief. That's like, you're suggesting one thing and they're saying, yes, but we'll do something totally different. That's like going into a Chinese restaurant and ordering eggplant parmesan.
I have to ask you a question.
It's not on the menu.
All right, so I understand, but what don't you understand about this? We have, as I mentioned earlier, we have over 50 years of experience on a fire commission. We have a chief who's so well-regarded in the region, innocent expert.
I don't disagree with that.
So why are you disagreeing with the experts?
So here's what I disagree with. There are three parts to this puzzle. There is you as the CEO, there's the Board of Finance that is responsible for funding each of the departments, the fire department being one of them, and then there is the fire commission that is responsible for establishing the policies utilizing the money that has been.
So you're making the point I made earlier.
No, 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 no.
You're missing, you're missing one, though.
So one of the, one of the pieces of the puzzle is.
You're missing the fourth piece.
And that is?
The taxpayer.
And as the town meeting, yes.
Because the funding, the funding has to come from someplace, and ultimately doesn't come from the Board of Finance, it comes from the taxpayer.
Right, and the taxpayers absolutely did not authorize two more firefighters.
In terms of actually solving the problem that you talk about, in terms of the number of firefighters, you know, if we wanted to go to six, or eight, or 12, or 16 more, you know, I think that becomes an issue in terms of many of the taxpayers. So, and I think that's the issue we're trying to come, we're trying to come to grips with, is how to maybe solve two different needs at the same time, that we have adequate.
Well, we started the ball in motion.
We have.
To hire eight. And hiring eight, I'm not even sure that that will actually address the real problem.
So we got the ball rolling.
I understand, but will the ultimate destination resolve the problem? I'm not sure, but yet, we're moving towards that direction, and we're not doing it with any real thought towards solving a problem.
So, I don't understand what you just said. What do you mean by that? I'm looking for you to explain, because I don't understand what you're saying.
I will absolutely explain it. If the problem is existing seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the vast majority of the calls.
I get to explain that, I get to spell that.
You'll have your turn, you'll have your turn.
Let's let Mrs.
If the statistics presented by the chief in the histogram show that the vast majority of the calls are occurring seven days a week between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, then I think you need to have a staffing solution that specifically addresses that. Simply adding two people, when the shift is one 24-hour shift followed by three days off, that means one week out of the month, that shift works one day. The other three, three weeks of the month, they work two days. So the probability, if someone has an ALS emergency and you need that particular shift with those two extra people, is like 4%. So it's not addressing the actual problem.
You're also forgetting another element that's needed, which is AMR.
Yes.
I mean, they have, they have ultimately the, you know, responsibility to respond to a lot of these calls as well.
Right, but we can't, we can't address that with our budget, we can't address that with what we're talking about today.
But again, that's also part of the puzzle here, is that, you know, I mean, the reason you have a fire department, the primary reason we've had a fire department is to fight fires. And over time, we've actually supplemented that with a number of other things that we need. But they, but they work in conjunction with AMR.
Right.
So I think you can't take them out of the mix, because they contribute substantially to the response system.
I completely understand what you're saying, but again, we're coming back to what is within our purview.
Right, and it's not completely on the fire department to do this.
What is under our control is, is what is under our control, both budgetarily and staffing. And Mike, would you agree that on the organizational chart for the town of North Haven, there is a direct line from the fire department to you?
Yeah, but what you're missing is that people like me, and this is kind of really what you're missing, okay? I appreciate your opinions, and obviously you've done a lot of research, but the experts disagree with you. So, as the CEO, I go with what the experts tell me who run the department every day. I'm not going to overrule the experts who do this every day, that's what you're missing. So, a good CEO, if he's got great, in my corporate career, executive vice presidents that reported to me, in this career, outstanding department heads, why would I overrule a talented, knowledgeable department head? That's what you're missing.
My response to that is if you, if you, if you want to honor the opinions of experts, as you just said, why didn't you give them the eight firefighters that they wanted last year? Because that's what they asked for.
Because that would have been too much of an impact for the taxpayers. That's why we booked 140, try to build this model.
So I think what, okay, I think what Ms. Barrett is saying is because they're putting the two that have, that you've authorized for hire only on one shift, so now there's going to be, for the balance, once they finish the academy and are on staff, right, there's going to be 10 guys on one shift, and then on the other three shifts, eight, eight, eight. It's just, you're only giving full coverage for a quarter, and you're open, and as I said on December 19th, we're almost boxing ourselves into a corner of having to hire six more, because they're doing, they're allocating them that way. My idea of weighted day duty, which was shared by Mr. Hallahan and Mr. Monaco, was that it was the cheapest first step to address the medical calls. And Bill is right, yes, you're right, Bill, the fire department is to fight fires. But two years ago, we had 19 fires. Last year, we had 35 fires. And in each of those years, we had close to 3,000 medical calls. So yes, we're a fire department, but most of our work is in, in emergency medical services. So that's why, you know, and when I quoted Mr. Monaco.
We're not the only one in that business.
I'm sorry?
We're not the only one in that business.
We're not the only, no, we have AMR as well, yes.
So, I mean, which, you know, which, which ultimately is the business they're in exclusively.
But I think we're trying to improve.
Which complicates the situation.
But, you know, we're trying to improve our, our fire department's emergency medical response, and that's why I was going for the cheapest first step. And I think Nancy just mentioned something that's put a whole new thought in my idea, in my head, when you mentioned the police with the.
Supernumeraries.
Supernumeraries. That had to be approved by their union, right? I remember you explaining that part of the delay, the whole supernumerary program was originally discussed like in March of 2018, but it didn't come to fruition until the June 25th, 2018 special town meeting. And you had explained one of the reasons for the delay, besides taking time to do the ordinance, was getting the police union to approve it, correct?
Correct.
And the police union approved it. Well, here the fire department, the firefighters' union is not willing to budge at all on their CBA. The, the police union agreed because they, they must have acknowledged that the town had a special interest in protecting our children, and, I mean, they could have very well said, hey, look, if you want a cop in every, in every school, then you're going to have to hire, hire five new full-time cops, members of the union, blah, blah, blah. But they didn't. They agreed to the supernumerary plan, which calls for five retired guys to work only while school is in session. They're not members of the union, they, they don't get any benefits, they're just paid, you know, wages for their services, and it's, it's a great program, I've talked to principals, it's working great. You know, the fire department accommodated a change to their union agreement to meet a special need.
The police department.
What did I say? Right, the police department accommodated their union agreement so that the town could meet a special need. The fire department is not willing to do that. And I just thought, you know, as, trying to keep the mill rate down as low as I can, and being the fiscally conservative member of this Board of Selectmen, as I consider myself to be, I was trying to meet a problem that the chief convinced me existed, more medical calls, with the cheapest first step, which is weighted day duty. And if that didn't help, then we can go to Plan A, or Plan B, Plan C, Plan D. But the, the fire union, unlike the police union, was unwilling to modify their CBA.
I think it's an incorrect analogy.
Okay.
And you're both, you're both missing an awful lot, but I appreciate your, the research you've done. You can't compare the supernumeraries with the situation, because part of the agreement with the police union was that the supernumeraries would be first offered, the SROs, to police officers currently on the town employ, they would have the first right of refusal. And that facilitated wonderful police officers retiring and taking it. So to draw an analogy between the police union and the fire union in this issue, and to cast an indirect aspersion or dispersion on these firefighters, the union, is incorrect. You can't be making an argument that the police union did this and the fire union didn't do that.
I'm not casting a dispersion.
It's not dispersions, it's a fact.
I, I'm not attacking any fire union, I'm just making a suggestion that specifically addresses a problem.
So Nancy, I have to ask you a question.
Yes.
You've obviously done a lot of research, right? You've been to the commission meetings.
Yes, I have.
You've expressed your opinion. They don't, they don't agree with your opinion. So why would you continue to disagree with the people who are running the department?
Because I'm still trying to solve a problem for our community that is not currently being addressed.
But the fire.
That's the problem. Even if he's the expert, the problem that he has brought to your attention is not being addressed by the solution.
But you're mixing.
So you're the CEO, that's why I'm calling to your attention.
You're mixing the issues, here's what you're missing again, you're missing something else that's very important.
If you were the CEO, what would you do? Would you raise the taxes so we could do that, or just hire eight more, or whatever you think? Give me your solution.
My suggestion was to go back and try to work with the union and see if we could do something that was specifically addressing this problem.
And what would that be?
With paramedics hired during the day. Weighted day paramedics that would be utilizing our medical vehicles that are just sitting there gathering dust. there gathering dust.
No, they're not. You know what, deny it.
All right, time, we'll get Brian, Brian, we'll put Brian in the public.
So, the false information being spread around...
Well, I mean, the, 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 the fire chief told me directly, the fire chief told me that the second medical unit is not used, and it's only used as a backup when the first medical unit is in the shop. So, whether, if, if the fire chief is inaccurate, then, then the false information is coming from him, because he told me that the, the, the second, we've purchased in the last five years, two new, um, medical rescue units. And I voted for both of them. One of them is a, is a backup when the other one, when the other one is in the shop. So, I think what Ms. Barrett is saying is let's activate that second one with weighted day duty. Remember, um, every time I talked with any member of the fire department, they always stressed to me the drain on the fire department of the, um, facilities on Divine Street, the Yale facilities, and how many trips are made there per year. And those facilities are closed at night and closed on the weekends. Um, but, you know, that's just one small element. They, they, um, but every time I talked with any rank and file, fire, fireman, they said, Sally, do something about Divine Street. That would really help us. And that's what I had in mind with the weighted day duty. Keep in mind, I wanted four new firefighters, and the fire department rejected it. I wanted to put one on each shift, activate the second ambulance, and reduce the engine...
You're in a realm that you can't possibly...
All right.
Hold on, let me just, can I finish my realm? I wanted...
I've been talking for an hour and a half.
Yep.
Brian, we'll get Brian up.
First of all, he's, um, I wanted to hire one per shift, had, had nine, have two on one ambulance, two on another, and reduce the engine from four to three, and then two on the ladder. That's nine guys. They told me last year, you can't do that, you need four on the engine. But what they're doing now is they're putting three on the engine at headquarters and three on the engine. They're doing exactly what I said.
Ms. Barrett, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do have other questions, yes.
All right, time out. Uh, Mrs. Barrett, you still have the floor.
Uh, yes, I just had a couple of questions about some other issues. Um, I was just wondering if there's going to be an article in the newspaper talking very specifically about the recycling delay, uh, because I think people would, would be interested to know. I, I personally am not having my recycling picked up, so i- if there is an explanation for the...
So, tell me about your individual issue. So, is it being picked up later in the morning?
Well, every other week, it's not being picked up at all.
Oh, okay.
And, and if you're, what you're suggesting is that it's a manpower issue, that that might be something that should go in the newspaper.
I'll tell you what, offline, if you'd like to give Valerie your address, not, not on, on camera, but...
Okay, no, no, no.
We'll, we'll address that.
But I think if the, the greater public could know that there is a manpower...
Well, that's kind of why, more, more people watch this than read the newspaper. That's why I mentioned this tonight, so...
Right.
But, but we'll take that on the revised one, okay?
Okay, and as far as the debris pickup, um, I think on some of the bigger streets, I know I live near, uh, Skiff Street, there really could be a big problem, um, if we get a big snowstorm.
Yeah.
Because there are big branches that are sticking out into the street, and if you then had to pile snow on top of that.
Okay.
So, it could be that it might be a good use of resources just to clear out some of the bigger streets, um, you know, if, if there are big branches. So, just, just a suggestion. And, um, and as far as, uh, economic development, it's great to see that, you know, so many of, uh, new, new businesses are coming to town, so congratulations on doing a great job with that. Um, one thing that I, I do have to have some, uh, comment about, since I volunteer with the Quinnipiac Valley Health District, uh, and serve on one of their committees, is I had some concerns about the new addition to the North Haven, North Haven Shopping Center, the, uh, organization that sells e-cigarettes and, and, uh, various vaping devices and so forth. Just from someone who has worked in the healthcare industry for 30 years, I don't think that that reflects well on our quaint community that's a destination location.
I would go along with you on that. It wasn't something I wanted to see there.
I'm sure.
I would agree with you.
But I, I think if, if we have the chance to replace that at some point soon, that would be a great idea.
We're in agreement on this, that one, Nancy, okay?
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, okay. All right, any other questions here? Uh, Brian Marino.
Brian Marino, Grove Road, resident, uh, almost a 20-year member of both the volunteer and the career, uh, fire department. Also an adjunct instructor, uh, with the Connecticut Fire Academy, so one of the only fire department experts you're going to hear throughout the rhetoric that was spewed upon tonight by, uh, by two members of, uh, the party of dysfunction here in town.
Brian, let's, let's, let's get, get a good...
The false alarms that you say, I mean, and everything, I don't, I definitely like the enthusiasm with you guys wanting to help us, but you've reached a point where you've gone over the edge. There's constantly misinformation that's being spoke about our data, about what we do times a day and all that. Uh, I am an expert in the data. I teach an NFRS program with the state of Connecticut, which is data extraction and data entry for new students to learn how to program these calls that we do into the system. When you look at a number like Rich Monaco brought up, the 23% false alarms, they're false alarms to you guys, and, uh, you guys have no ability to know how to actually break down emergency information. Um, and I respect that, very much so. But in that 23% of false alarms, you guys would probably more consider this a data coding error on your end. Out of those 23% of false alarms, that's food on the stove calls at the, uh, at any one of our many, uh, senior living, assisted living facilities, where there was a fire in there, and it's not actually a false alarm. We go in there, make sure the fire is out, make sure the elderly person didn't put burning materials in their trash. We use thermal imaging to look at their cabinets above. They have fan systems that sometimes fire gets up into, and then the building is filled up with smoke, where our tower ladder or one of the volunteer companies is going to come in with large smoke ejecting fans and get rid of all the smoke from the building. Those aren't false alarms, you know? So, it's very hard, when you, when you look at a pie chart of what the fire department's call runs, volume are, sometimes those pop up as false alarms because of the way that it was coded into our system. Not every time is going to be because of the different people that are inputting alarms, and it's a training thing on our end that we're going to take care of to make sure that everything is going to be done the same way. Furthermore into that, on the medical side of things, one thing that you guys don't ever take into consideration is how are medical calls coded? You know motor vehicle accidents are coded as medical on our system? You pull that out. We're one of the highest towns in the state of Connecticut for motor vehicle extracations and accidents annually. Uh, one of the patch articles just came out and showed exactly how many accidents we have here. Those accidents are coded under our medical side of those, of that reporting. It doesn't mean that an ambulance can handle that by itself. Uh, we have specialized tools that cut people out of cars. A fire hose line is pulled to ensure if, if, uh, if there's any ignitable materials. That thing, uh, it's all, it's not a medical call. Yeah, there's a medical function, the medical unit responds. If the medical unit is unavailable, we split that team of four on that engine company to work for both fire suppression services and for emergency medical services. So, I can understand in whatever field you guys come from, not being able to truly understand that information. Uh, the only methodology that we have for reporting is through the National Fire Incident Reporting System and through our medical system, which you guys don't have any availability to, uh, due to the HIPAA, the HIPAA Act. You guys can't look at some of that. As far as wanting to change our work schedule and all that stuff, you've far exceeded your boundaries on that. And, you know, I've said it before, that people have become a, that the fire department has just become a pet of everybody. Um, I mean, Sally, what type of law do you practice?
Um, real estate, probate, general practice.
And you're still at 270 Quinnipiac Avenue down there?
Yes.
What time can I come tomorrow, give you some advice on operating that, uh, law firm? Do you have partners down there?
No, I work alone.
You work alone? May I come in, streamline some stuff for you? I've never practiced law before, but...
We, we've met one-on-one before.
Yeah, we have.
Last year, I believe, during the budget season.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've met a couple times.
I was actually invited to the, um, headquarters for a different reason, and you kind of got me at the door and brought me into a conference room, and we had at least an hour and a half, mostly respectful conversation.
Sure.
You know, but one thing about those, um, statistics, when I was quoting them, I was quoting them from Mr. Monaco.
Yeah. And that's what I mean, a lot of information has been trickled downward, and we're playing the telephone game with data.
Well, I, I heard him on the video say it and wrote it, wrote down what, what he said, and what he said on September 19th, after researching six months of calls, what that was that 63% were medical, 23% false alarms, 14% auto accidents, but if you discount false alarms, which could include dispatch errors and cancellations, the medical calls was 71%. And I think his purpose and my purpose was only not to misconstrue or to misidentify or to misquali- quantify or qualify the calls, but to simply make the point that most of our calls are medical, and I, I hope you would agree with that.
Yeah, but the number is actually closer to 60. What you guys get for that kind of stuff, without being bogged down with codes, so I would have to define to you what a one, code 113 is, which is a cooking fire in school.
Right, but I was, I was just going...
So, what you guys get for that type of information is simplified reports.
Right.
You guys wouldn't have any idea how to go through some of these, these national standard codes of trying to figure out what exactly each call is. So, you guys get that, it's a, it's a basic report that has long been going on in the, in, uh, in the North Haven Fire Department during the chief's report of the fire commission meetings. That's been going on since Chief Rosadini was here, where they came out and they give you a generalization of the type of calls that happened over that month period. Though, that's the type of stuff that you guys are looking at. It's a, it's a simplified report. When you fully break it down and actually look at the numbers, there's not 23%, quarter of our, a quarter of our alarms here are not false alarms. I can absolutely guarantee that.
Well, that's, that's what was discussed at the Board of Finance meeting.
I understand what was discussed, but there's a massive amount of misinformation.
No, I, I, but, um, uh, what I, I was at the January 29th, um, Fire Commission meeting. I think the chief reported medical calls at 65% at that meeting. So, I'm sure it fluctuates.
It absolutely does.
I mean, averages are averages. But, um, you know, this entire process, um, of, um, requesting more firefighters really began from a tragedy that occurred in August of 2017, and you know the incident.
I do, but the problems were way, way before that.
I know that, but that's what really spearheaded the drive for more, um, firefighters and the public's attention to the desire to improve the responses for medical calls, was because of that issue. I mean, and I, I think that is something that you could agree with, that spearheaded all of this, was that tragedy.
Understandable, but what's, what's the jump-off point? Like, you know, and I've said it before, that not all departments, no matter what anybody says, are treated the same way. What, what other department have you dove into the depths of work schedules and things like this? Like, like to the depths that it's going, like, with, with, with the subcommittees findings, which I didn't feel, although their bipartisan in title was not very bipartisan, uh, with the members, as those two members have been some of the most outspoken members for the fire department on the Board of Finance. Nobody has dove this far into there, and it's, it's frustrating for us because we, we take the high road all the time.
I'll answer your question. I will be the public...
So, we don't, we don't come, we don't come to the meetings and embark. I, I haven't, I've been the president here for five years, I've been on the executive board for almost 15. Uh, I live here too, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
These are, these are my tax dollars that are contributing to everything as well. It's very hard to sit here and listen to all this misinformation and ideas, and then, you know, throwing daggers at us at the fire union about that we won't, you know, that the, like, like Frida said, it's a completely different game, the supernumeraries versus what we do.
Right, it, I was only using that as an example of co-op, of, of a union willing to change, to, to accommodate something. That's, that was my only example, but to answer your question, have I ever delved into any other department, I'll say yes, Public Works.
No, no, nobody has dove into our department.
You asked me if I have, and I'm saying yes, Public Works.
If I go back, and I, and I do forensically analyze all of these things, I watch them up until all hours of the night. I have them, Walt's a good friend of ours, he works out of our building next door. I have all of these to go back and watch. No other town apartment have you ever really dove this far into?
Well, no, no.
I mean, and I know the, some of the people that you've talked to, there's all been a trail of breadcrumbs that lead back to the people that you've talked to, and they're outspoken members against the career fire department. And some of the fire chiefs or town managers that you've talked to are in towns that are unbelievably not even comparable to the town of North Haven, especially the modern town of North Haven. And that's unfair to us, because some of the information that you've gotten from that is inaccurate.
Right.
It's completely inaccurate.
Well, um, well, to comment on your comment that the, uh, first of all, you, you said no other, no other department has been under the scrutiny that the fire department is under. I think, as Mr. Hallahan said, or Mr. Monaco, no other department has ever requested a 50% increase in personnel. So, that could be part of the reason. And, and, um, I thought that your comments at the November 27th, 2018 Board of Fire Commission's meeting during public comment that the, um, subgroup or committee was, was illegal was a little bit too much.
It was, I wouldn't bring that up here, because I...
That was an insult to Mr. Frida, because I thought that his...
There's still some border...
Yeah, his, his intention of forming it...
I don't remember seeing minutes posted for that meeting, or when the meeting was going to be, so let's, let's not go there. What's done is done, that horse has been beaten up enough lately.
Yeah, but I watched that, I thought, you know, so you, you talk about me going over the edge, me exceeding barriers, you know, uh, you know...
I'm a taxpayer here, I could question anything.
I am a taxpayer too, but I am on the Board of Selectmen, you are the president of the fire union. We both have jobs and responsibilities in the town. But all I'm saying is, you know, um, as far as exceeding, when I started talking about weighted day duty, I was really exceeding myself. Well, you're going to have to say the same thing to the chairman of the Board of Finance and to Mr. Hallahan, because they both came to the same conclusion as I did.
Right, but there's, there's a lot of things that are, that are missed in that, and I, and I feel like a broken record that myself, the fire chief, the, uh, the chairman of the Board of Fire Commission has to come up and keep saying all this stuff over and over again for you guys to hear, and you keep bringing it back up over and over again. Listen, your idea's not going to work, all right? All, all of us people, like, and I under, listen, I, I, I do appreciate the work you guys put into doing this, analyzing data, trying to analyze data, but I don't expect you to understand it all the way.
Well, I, I understand...
It's just, we're a different, like, the closest department to us is the police department.
Right.
And their order of operations is completely different than ours.
Yes.
They're, they're almost non-comparable, but those are the two closest ones in town.
Right.
Uh, we have to ask each other questions all the time about different policies, just so we could get a better understanding, and we work together all the time. I don't expect somebody that's never worked a day in their life in emergency services to understand a lot of what we do. And we have, for the record, this department, the firefighters' union, the professional firefighters in North Haven, was, was the first department that conceded on the health insurance years ago and saved this town a ton of money in year one. We saved the town over $2 million. We saved the town over $2 million. So when you talk about conceding, that's, maybe your memory's a little bit short for stuff like that. Every other department followed suit after we switched to health insurance. And they piggybacked on the, the language that we wrote to make sure that the health insurance was right for all the, for all the town workers here. So I don't want to hear about none of that concessions. We also worked off of a grant that was used to diminish our overtime and not make us safer for about five, five to eight years. So there has been massive concessions by the fire department here. So I, you know, I take a lot of offense and.
Yeah, okay.
The daggers that you threw before about us not conceding on the perceived work schedule that you want us to work. Think about how obtrusive that is. If I come into your office tomorrow morning and I want to ask you to start working overnights in your law firm, you're gonna have some questions about that. You've worked that way for a long time, presumably during regular business hours. You know, you would be a little bit offended that, okay, you're assuming that all the emergencies happen between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.?
I never said all. I said most.
The most egregious and, and.
And not even, I'm not talking about most, I'm talking about most overlapping contemporaneous, because that was the issue that the chief really highlighted in his presentation last year, was the overlapping call.
So last night and the night before, we had overlapping calls.
Right.
All night during the evening hours. There was one call where the main extrication unit was unavailable to cut somebody out of a car, backup extrication unit had to come. That was around 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. The day before, we had an accident on I-91 that, that stuck us on the, on the interstate for about an hour and a half, and multiple calls came in behind that there. So there's, there's no way to time a slot machine.
Right.
You know, everything we do is random, but the potential for more disastrous things and high levels of death happened at, happened at night. But even that, you can't, you can't set a clock to that. You know, the, the fires get more of a head start on us at nighttime. So the same argument that you have for the overlapping calls and the higher call volume during the day, we have the same thing at night, except for it's much worse. People don't detect fire. People are driving around during the day, you're gonna see a plume of clouds somewhere, and trust me, the people in this town love to call 911. They call a lot of 911s in here. They're gonna see a plume of smoke from somewhere, and they're gonna call it in, even if they don't know where it is. It's in the direction of this. At nighttime, people don't see that. Fires get a really good head start on us at nighttime, which is why the majority of our fatal structure fires, which we've had a lot of here in this town, happen in the overnight hours when people are sleeping. You know, people aren't awake in their own houses. So same thing with our severe car accidents. The severe car accidents, for the most part, do come in in the overnight hours. And I don't think we need to know the reasons why, everybody knows why.
I, I could only, you know, base what I believe, or what I, my opinions that I draw, based on what, what the, a lot of what the chief told me. And at that, at that presentation last year, he gave four examples of overlapping medical calls, and three out of the four were during the workday Monday through Friday.
Four examples out of 300.
Right, I know, but those were the ones that he chose to give to support his need for more, more men because of the increase in medical calls. And I mentioned that to him at the January 29th, 2019 Fire Commission meeting. I said, you know, you, four, three out of your four examples were during the workday, the over, three out of the four overlapping examples were during the workday. And he laughed and he said, yeah, that's why I kept it out of this presentation this year.
I mean, in his defense, he does try to do, uh, he tries to do it in a way where people who aren't in the emergency services will understand it a little bit better too.
Right.
You know, they try to boil down what we do. This is why the simplified reports come out. And we could sit here at a budget workshop meeting and he could put all the technical data out there, there's no way for anybody that's outside of the service to understand it, uh, what, what we're talking about here.
But I, I do want to remind you, Mr. Marino, that I was the only elected official besides the members of the fire commission who are elected, to advocate for new firefighters last year.
Right, but it's always been under your terms, Sally, and that's, that's unfair to the townspeople here, and it's unfair to the fire department. It's really, it was proven tonight.
The four, I thought they would just go one per shift.
I mean, Mike's administration here has made a great attempt at trying to right the wrongs of what's happened for a long time here. This was a great leap forward, hiring the two firefighters. The subcommittee is not an expert committee. You know, the, the, the two chiefs that were on that committee had minimal, minimal involvement with that, and Ed Swinkowski had minimal involvement with that, other than the financial end of it. You know, where those guys pulled the information and data from is, you know, it's between them. But it wasn't an expert study, it wasn't.
But unfortunately, and I.
And you called in, and that subcommittee, for the record, just so the public knows, called in every entity to ask their advice about that, except for the guys that would actually be performing the work, the professional firefighters in North Haven. They brought all kinds of people in to talk about what to do, but they never brought us in and talked about that, so.
All right, I think we covered a lot here, okay?
Right, uh, okay.
I think we, we've, we've, we've covered a lot.
And always, and I've said this at meetings before, I empower anybody here, especially, I see the same faces here every time we're here, all the same people that are here, the people listening at home. You can't take some of this stuff for gospel here, you have to reach out to the experts. If you want to know information about the fire department, come to 11 Broadway during business hours and ask the fire chief. Ask to see the fire chief, schedule an appointment to, to see him. Ask one of your fire, if it's, if you're passing, you see us shopping, you know, we're, we're residents here too. You're gonna see us out shopping. Stop and grab one of us, you're gonna have a better idea of what's happening through anybody through that department.
Well, earlier I was talking about the rescue units, and I said something and you started to grumble from the back.
Well, yeah, yeah, we do have two rescue units, and one of them is a Ford, that's now seven years old, that's beat up, which is why we have the next one. It's not just another unit that's there. It's, we replaced the unit. We've never been good at proactive capital improvements on apparatus here, which is why we're in a situation that we're in now. We, we still have a 1983 apparatus in service here with seats that don't really fit, with lap belts and no shoulder belts in it.
That's why I voted in favor of the engine.
And I do, and I do appreciate that, but like, just for this small thing with the rescues, I understand. They're not too, like, if we were running those two rescues every day, that Ford would be dead in six months.
So then we buy a new $160,000 unit, as we would do.
Yeah, but, to your point, you act like we have two brand-new units sitting there.
No, I didn't say brand-new, I said we have, the chief told me there's two units.
The main one has been out of service for a week. I don't know if you've driven by and seen the white one up there.
I have seen the white one out and about.
That's because there was a huge oil leak on it, so that's what we use that one for.
But when, when the chief told me that only one is in service and the other is a backup, you started grumbling, is that true or false?
Yeah, that's true. Of course it is.
Okay, well, you made a big statement when I said that.
You make no point. Like, yes, there's two rescue units, and one is in service.
No, my point is, let's activate both of them, and I'll tell you why. Because when the chief, this last, um, um, the most recent fire commission, fire department workshop, where he presented his arguments before the Board of Finance just a couple of weeks ago, near the end of his presentation, he was asked about some of the mechanical problems with the engines. And we know that one that's about four years old blew a head gasket and, and all sorts of problems. And he was asked, why do you think that's happening? And his first response was, well, because our engines are being used so much, they're out all the time. Other departments, they only have their engines out once or twice. So I'm saying to myself, that's because we're using an engine.
It's not because of the medicals, and I could speak, I'm, I'm expert on this. I am one of those shift bosses that rides that unit.
Right.
All right? We do a lot more fire calls than we do medical calls on that. I mean, you could come hang around the firehouse, you could install a scanner in your house, and you could listen to what we're going to, or I could give you printouts monthly of what Engine 1 is doing, but it's not, we, are we doing EMS? Of course we are, we're the second unit that responds to Engine 1.
And, and the chief has said, well, that's why they're, they're breaking down so much, they're used so much. I'm trying to use, because whether it's 62% or 65% or 71% or medical, I'm trying to activate a second $160,000 medical rescue unit.
But it's not encompassing of all the other needs of the fire department as well. We are a Swiss Army knife, and we have been since 1967.
Right.
Okay, so if we can put an engine into service at a, at a remote location that we've never had before, to make that part of town safer, and also run EMS from that engine, we're gonna look to do that. And if we can't, if, if we'd be willing to maybe flex on stuff like that, moving people around, yes. But that's for the union, the town that we negotiate with, and the fire chief to deal with. It's not meant for public comment. It's not meant to be beat to death over a two-year period about what we do and fully analyzing what we do on our job, and what hours we should be working, what equipment we should have. I mean, why not Sally Buehme for chief? Or Nancy Barrett for chief? If that's, if that's the case? Because you guys can come up and talk like you know about it.
Unfortunately, in municipal government, the, you know, I was on the Board of Finance in the 80s, and so as long as I know, as long as I've been around municipal government, the Board of Finance decides the money that is recommended in the budget that's voted on by the taxpayers. Uh, that's, the, the buck stops with the Board of Finance.
No, actually, and, uh, you're gonna have to dig through the records on this, but you'll look at a ruling from 1948 in the Charter of the Town of North Haven, the fire commission sets the staffing for the fire department, and that's in law.
But within, within the money that they're giving.
No, there's no contingency on it. The fire commission sets the staffing levels of the fire department.
Then why didn't they get the eight men that they wanted last year?
Because this is a, for whatever reason, I'm not gonna.
Because they weren't given the funding for it, that's why.
We did not get the funding for it.
Okay.
But, uh, so this is, this start here with the two firefighters, and whether you guys agree, disagree, that, you know, it was all or nothing with you guys. The two firefighters under your terms, or that's it. And, uh, we don't negotiate with terrorists, that, that's it. Like, you know, we need these firefighters, this is gonna get the ball rolling, and essentially what you guys want to do as well. We need to expand the fire department to better our response over the 22 square mile geographical area at here, at hard times and all of that stuff. This is a start to get the ball rolling in that direction to do that.
All right.
I don't, I don't, I don't really, um, enjoy being called the terrorists.
No, I'm just saying, they're, they're. Terrorists make demands.
Sir, I am a duly elected member of the Board of Selectmen, and I was trying to come up with ideas, because I have to be, every time I talk to a citizen, they complain to me about taxes. Town, Sally, you gotta keep the taxes down, taxes are out of control. So I did research, I listened to a lot of people, and I came up with an idea that I thought was the cheapest way to meet a greatest need, which was wait-to-day duty. And it wasn't acted on, so I moved on, and then all of a sudden.
You didn't move on, it was, it was your first item agenda tonight.
No, all, well, because I moved on from last year, it just, you know.
No, you didn't, this is stemmed, this is coming over from last year again.
Well, if you just let me finish my, my sentence, you know, I, I made my point last year, the Board of Finance did not allocate any money for any additional firefighters. This committee was formed, the report in that committee recommended the wait-to-day duty, that's what put it back on the table, not me. I wouldn't have brought it up again, they brought it up again. And those were a bipartisan committee, and I know you're gonna say they have no fire experience, but what I'm trying to tell you is, it's the Board of Finance that, that tells all the departments, not just your department, but all the departments, how much money they could have to effectuate their policy.
Of course.
That's what I'm saying.
Of course, that's our method of organizing our checkbook-style government that we have.
And so it was, it was that committee, which you said was illegal, that, that, that came, that brought.
I questioned the legality of it.
Yes, you did.
Yes.
That you questioned the legality of, it was that committee that threw the, the wait-to-day duty issue back in, because that's what they recommended in their report, I'm sure you saw the report just as I did. I didn't make it up, I didn't tell them to put it in there, I wasn't part of that, so.
I have another note.
Yeah.
I want to commend Mike on the economic development, because.
Me too.
2.8% is gonna be able to make us move in the right direction, as we're one of the only departments that's truly affected by the economic development. Uh, the other thing, I'd like to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission on actually making that realization at a public meeting, that things do affect emergency services as we're building them. Um, and so it does need to be taken into consideration. Uh, I'm all for more economic development if we're moving, uh, if we're moving in the right direction on that stuff. So just, I mean, in closing, I do appreciate the hours and hours of work that some of you guys have done on all these bits and points of information, but it doesn't supplant a lifetime of professional service.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, we spent an hour and 40 minutes on this subject tonight. Mary White.
The welfare of the citizens is worth the time.
I'm sorry, I won't be too long. Mary White Summerling. So the first thing I have to do is I have to make a clarification, and I have to make it publicly. I was accused of having something against seniors, if you can believe it. And that's not true. And this accusation stemmed from comments I made Monday night to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which had a zone change request before them to overdevelop our 40 zone land to a 128 units of elderly housing at 343 Clintonville Road. I reminded the commission, they are the town planners. I reminded them how the fire chief has authored the same opinion on other previously proposed, then-approved apartment complexes and condominium developments. The fire chief, the most senior, most fire expert in the town, has warned the commission of the added stress on the already stressed fire department and emergency medical services, and how the proposed development or zone change would draw more seniors to the town. One such example, where the chief authored his opinion, was the recently approved Bradley Homes of 237 units. And he said that that development will impact the fire department and emergency medical services. The fire chief cannot guarantee the fire department could adequately service the development. So I went on to tell the commission about some statistics that we're all aware of. Over 60% of alarms are EMS and ALS related. There is a consistent 26% to 28% of overlapping simultaneous calls for service. There is no guarantee AMR will respond with a paramedic, and there is no guarantee AMR will respond in less than 10 minutes. I told the commission how the town's fire department fleet is old, the average age is around 20 years, and the backup ladder truck is over 30 years old. I told them that the, um, there have been only three apparatus operating out of fire headquarters since the early 1970s. There is only one fireman paramedic on active duty per shift, and there has been no increase in fire personnel to handle the increase in alarms and overlapping calls since 2009. Okay. I told the commission they need to be responsible with their planning, they need to heed their responsibility to consider the impact of the request on town services. And, okay, and then I said to them, no one knows what the Board of Finance will include in the budget relative to the fire chief's request for more personnel, more paramedics, and more apparatus. In the end, I told the commission, it is about the public's health, safety, and welfare. They can no longer ignore the fact that planning and zoning approvals for zone, zone changes, apartment complexes, condominium developments, affect, impact, and further stress the already stressed fire department and emergency services. I said they should know, they must no longer ignore the fire chief's warnings. They have an obligation to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. They must stop and think before they approve, and first consider the public's health, safety, and welfare. They decided to table their decision till next month. So I come from a place of looking out for the public's health, safety, and welfare. That public includes all ages, young, middle-aged, senior. That's why I speak out, is for the protection of the public, I have nothing against seniors. So thank you for letting me make that clarification. Okay, so in case anyone has doubts, I support the fire department and public safety. I recently watched the Fire Commission meeting, and I listened to the compromise articulated by the fire chief. I don't know if people are aware of the compromise, but here it is. The two new firemen paramedics will be placed on one of the four shifts, increasing that one shift to 10 on staff. There will be a second water truck out of Montwies that will have three firemen, paramedics, or three firemen on there, I think, one will be a supervisor, and then one will definitely be a paramedic. Okay? There will be three firemen on the headquarters water truck, because now that there will be two operable water trucks, there now can be three firemen on each truck. So I, and then he talked about providing paramedic equipment on that Montwies water truck. So, and then there would be a second fireman paramedic on that, active, on that Montwies water truck. He explained, due to the fact, the response time to the Montwies area, the, from fire headquarters, it takes 12 to 14 minutes. So we know that lives will be saved when, when, because of a second, um, when a second EMS ALS call comes in. And also property will be saved, because in the event there is a fire in the Montwies section of town, there will be a water truck there able to respond. And as a reminder, there's a, a lot of developments over there in town, such as 76 units in Lexington Gardens. If one of those homes catches fire, that's gonna spread very quickly. They're very tightly squeezed on about 12 acres. There is, um, let's see, senior apartments on Quinnipiac Avenue, and there is 150 townhouses on Half Mile Road. So, um, this scenario will occur 25% of the time. So let's say the two new firemen are put on shift one, so they'll be on for 24 hours, three days off, then they come back on, and then there'll be 10 of them working. So it is my hope that the Board of Finance includes in the fire department's budget more firemen, paramedic, more personnel, more apparatus via the four-year lease-to-purchase method. I, I like that method, I think that's really smart. $24,000 for 15 bulletproof vests and help, and 15 helmets. I did not know our firefighters did not have this protective equipment, should they respond to violent scenes where injuries occur, are occurring, and where guns can be fired at, at the firemen. Let's see, and I hope, oh, I hope that they include the hose inspections, and I hope that they include PPE, which is the personal protection equipment. Okay, let's see. It also, I hope that they will include a schedule for replacement of apparatus. I hope that's implemented. I hope they also put a schedule in there for the PPE replacement. And so I would support the hiring of two firemen, paramedics each year. With the influx of money from economic development, the money will help offset the cost of the two firefighters per year. Future projects that were not mentioned in the PowerPoint include 150 apartments were approved on the Upper West Side of Washington Avenue, and 150 apartments were approved at Fantasia, let's see, and of course the Bradley Homes, 237 units. So I believe we do not need a referendum question, because a fiscally responsible thing to do is to include two firemen, paramedics in each budget year for the next three years. So in the end, we'll have eight, and then there will be 10 per shift on all four shifts, having coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Barry.
Mary, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Because of the way the two newly hired personnel are being allocated on just one of the four shifts, and that is the way that they are activating a second active paramedic with paramedic equipment on an engine, doesn't that mean we have, we're kind of boxed in and now we have really no choice but to add, to make it equal?
Because right now, there's only 25% coverage of the-- because only one out of the four, which I think was the point Ms. Barrett was really trying to make. So we pretty much, in order to give the same protection 24/7, which I'm sure many people in the town want, we basically have to hire a total of eight more. Would you agree with that?
It would be six more.
Well, a total of eight.
Two per year. We've already hired--
I'm counting the two that we just hired as--
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, spread it out, because--
No, to minimize--
Fire calls, while there may not be a large percentage, they're very, very serious. They're deathly. I mean, if you think about the-- was it the Defco Park Chemical Company? I mean, they made a fantastic stop there. They prevented contamination of the water supply and evacuation of the neighborhoods. You know what I mean? It's just fires are so-- you know what I mean? People can die of smoke inhalation. You know what I mean? It's just, they have-- the way that the Fire Department works is that it's like dual. They have, yes, their paramedics or EMTs, but they're firefighters. You know what I mean? They always have to be ready for that fire call. And so I think that this is the Chief's compromise. And I think that fiscally responsible with all this economic development, I think that's the way to do it. You can't just put six in this budget and expect people to go for that mil rate increase.
So by compromise--
They're not gonna go for it.
By compromise, you mean phasing them in over--
Phasing them in. He said he would accept that, and I definitely like the idea of activating a water truck in Montwies.
Okay.
I mean, if you've seen that Lexington Gardens development, those homes are like 20 feet apart. If one of them catches fire, you're gonna spread like that. You know, I mean, you really have to, and it takes 12 to 14 minutes to get there. That's a fact.
Chairman, not Chairman, Commissioner Zuccarelli at the--
He lives next door.
Was talking about that development, saying that the ladder truck, because of its size and maneuvering, couldn't even drive in that area. That was from the Commissioner, not me, the terrorist. But the Commissioner said that. No, I agree about the fire at Defco Park. I thought they did a great job, and that's why I advocated for immediate payment by the town to replace the $567,000 worth of equipment. So I agree with you on a lot of things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
This is always taller than me. I have to agree with Mary on the firefighter situation. As a wife of a retired firefighter, I've been privy to quite a bit of what goes on at fires that never come out in the paper. And these young men, every single one of them, risk their lives for us every day. And I, for one, appreciate them. And it's sad that we have to worry about the money, but we do. You know, we're all trying to exist in this town. But hopefully, we will put two on every year, you know, until we reach what we need, because with all the development, we do need quite a few more. And it's sad, because they're risking their lives to save our lives. That's, you know, money really is just-- you can't even think of the money when you're talking about saving lives, but we have to. On a lighter note, I am so thrilled that we are buying the town's purchased the Neoproperty. And it wasn't mentioned tonight, but that property used to be a dairy farm, which you know, probably. Yeah, and the foundation to the old barn is still there. Of course, I believe the house will be torn down, because that's, you know, there's no reason for that. But it's just wonderful that we're increasing the open space on Peter's Rock. I'm so thrilled about that. And I'd like to see some kind of a commemoration or plaque or something put there eventually to note that it was a Neoproperty farm.
I think we can do that, Joan.
Yeah, because that's part of the history, you know?
And you know that history better than anybody in this room. Decades you've had your experience out there.
It is. It's a beautiful spot, and the best thing was when the town took it as eminent domain years ago. If that spot was ever lost, that mountain, I call it "The Mountain,"